All right, we are live in three, two, one, action.
Okay, good evening. Today is Wednesday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is the Hendrick Hudson School Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion to open the meeting, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a, um, excuse me, the Hendrick Hudson School Board of Education will convene a, an executive session for the purpose of collective negotiations under the Taylor Law, medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment or employment or promotion or demotion or discipline or suspension or removal of a particular person or corporation. Can I have a motion to move to exec, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. For the public, we will be back in about an hour at about seven PM. We will see you then.
Are we starting soon?
I do not have a clue. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I was just, yes, I was just waiting for Bill. I don't see him here. Is he here? We might have to proceed without him. I don't know what happened. I was just giving Bill a minute in case he was having technical difficulty. And there he comes. Okay. I think we're all here.
You can begin whenever you're ready, Carol.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, April 7th, 2021, and this is the Hindercuts and School Board of Education meeting. We are already in session. We just left the executive session. Can we please start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That was lovely. Do we know which class that was from? Yeah, right, Lori?
It was another kindergarten class.
All right. Thank you. So can I have, oh, first of all, no, yeah, I'm right. I got my head a little backwards here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated, please? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Does anybody have anything to pull from the consent agenda this evening? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Lori and Mary Pat, we can't see you. Lori, we can see you now. Are you in favor of the consent agenda? Just raise your hand. Okay.
Hold on. We don't have to pull policy, correct?
Correct. No, that comes at the end. Like our regular policy readings. Yeah, that's going to be the very end. All right. So that brings us to the items removed of which there were none this evening. So that will bring us to our superintendent's report.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to update the board and the community on our return to school at the secondary level. As you know, the middle school and high school kids are on a hybrid model. We are moving toward three days and two days a week where kids will rotate. And we've surveyed our parents, asking them if they wish to return to in-person instruction. We have had a really, really low return rate. When we met two weeks ago, we had about 400 families respond to the survey. That's about 400 families out of 1,400-ish that the email went to. We extended the deadline a few weeks and we received about 200 more responses. So all in all, we had 627 families respond to the survey. 144 of them wished to stay hybrid and the balance 483 wished to return more frequently. So that's about a two, I'm sorry, three, three quarters to one quarter breakdown. So what happens now, the middle school and the high school teams have the data. They have identified, been able to identify which kids wish to return. And this is where the labor-intensive work starts. What each team has to do, middle school and high school, is determine if there is enough physical classroom space for these students to return based on their schedule. So it's not just, oh, sure, come back. We have plenty of room. They actually have to look at the current enrollment of number of in-person students in each of the classes. And as you know, middle school and high school rotate through anywhere between seven and eight courses. Also concerns around out of lunch, but we're working on that. And then we'll determine if we need to purchase additional PPE. As we talked about a few weeks ago, we do have the option to reduce social distancing within six feet so long as there is a barrier and students wearing masks. There is a lot of discussion whether or not the barrier mandate will stay. The CDC loosened up, but the CDC is just a guidance agency for the New York State Department of Health. So the DOH has been sitting on this topic for a while. Many districts have spent a great deal of resources, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, on barriers that they may actually not need. So we're trying to time the return to school with some more guidance. But it may be likely that in order to return more students to school, we're going to have to have another significant outlay of PPE or in this case, barriers, Plexiglas barriers, that we may end up not needing. But it's important that everyone understands we pushed the deadline for the survey out so we could get more responses. We still only have less than maybe a 50% response rate. But now the work begins of identifying whether there's enough space for students to return. And then we'll determine whether or not we need to buy PPE. So that's an ongoing conversation. I know the middle school and high school have been reviewing that data. Our last set of survey responses came in as recently as yesterday. We may have some more coming in right now if they're watching our meeting, and that's a good thing. But that's part of the process. We can't just unilaterally allow everyone to come back and not be able to maintain social distancing or meet some of those requirements. So hopefully by, I would say, another week, mid-week, we'll know what our full liability is. That basically means how many students would come back each day and would we be able to educate them? And then the determination of what additional resources we need. So we're getting close. An early spring break sort of delayed it, but also wanted to make sure we gave parents an opportunity to respond to the survey. And, you know, again, less than half did, but we need to move forward with the data we have.
Ally, you have a question?
Yeah. So the families that didn't respond, what happens to them? So what if they hear that their friends down the street are now going back and they want to come too? How are we going to respond to the non-responders?
Yeah. Well, we first will, as I said, build mock schedules of those that wish to return more often and really determine if there's space. So for example, we had to make the hard cutoff when we offered the full remote model at the elementary school. And that model was full when we reached our class caps because even in our 11 elementary remote sections, we still are following our class caps even though we're digital. So we did have families that said, oh gee, I wish to be remote. We tried to find space or vice versa. We had families that, oh, I clicked the wrong box on the survey. I don't want my child to be remote. I want them to come in. Or they came in after school started because of different situations. So we deal with them basically individually. What we'll need to do
Are we starting soon?
I do not have a clue. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I was just, yes, I was just waiting for Bill. I don't see him here. Is he here? We might have to proceed without him. I don't know what happened. I was just giving Bill a minute in case he was having technical difficulty. And there he comes. Okay. I think we're all here.
You can begin whenever you're ready, Carol.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, April 7th, 2021, and this is the Hindercuts and School Board of Education meeting. We are already in session. We just left the executive session. Can we please start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That was lovely. Do we know which class that was from? Yeah, right, Lori?
It was another kindergarten class.
All right. Thank you. So can I have, oh, first of all, no, yeah, I'm right. I got my head a little backwards here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated, please? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Does anybody have anything to pull from the consent agenda this evening? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Lori and Mary Pat, we can't see you. Lori, we can see you now. Are you in favor of the consent agenda? Just raise your hand. Okay.
Hold on. We don't have to pull policy, correct?
Correct. No, that comes at the end, like our regular policy readings. Yeah, that's going to be the very end. All right. So that brings us to the items removed of which there were none this evening. So that will bring us to our superintendent's report.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to update the board and the community on our return to school at the secondary level. As you know, the middle school and high school kids are on a hybrid model. We are moving toward three days and two days a week where kids will rotate. And we've surveyed our parents, asking them if they wish to return to in-person instruction. We have had a really, really low return rate. When we met two weeks ago, we had about 400 families respond to the survey. That's about 400 families out of 1,400-ish that the email went to. We extended the deadline a few weeks and we received about 200 more responses. So all in all, we had 627 families respond to the survey. 144 of them wished to stay hybrid and the balance 483 wished to return more frequently. So that's about a two, I'm sorry, three, three quarters to one quarter breakdown. So what happens now, the middle school and the high school teams have the data. They have identified, been able to identify which kids wish to return. And this is where the labor intensive work starts. What each team has to do, middle school and high school is determine if there is enough physical classroom space for these students to return based on their schedule. So it's not just, oh, sure, come back. We have plenty of room. They actually have to look at the current enrollment of a number of in-person students in each of the classes. And as you know, middle school and high school rotate through anywhere between seven and eight courses. Also concerns around out of lunch, but we're working on that. And then we'll determine if we need to purchase additional PPE. As, as we talked about a few weeks ago, we do have the option to reduce social distancing within, within six feet, so long as there is a barrier and students wearing masks. There is a lot of discussion whether or not the barrier mandate will stay. The CDC loosened up, but the CDC is just a a guidance agency for the New York State Department of Health. So the DOH has been sitting on this topic for a while. Many districts have spent a great deal of resources, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars on, on barriers that they may actually not need. So we're trying to time the return to school with some more guidance. But it may be likely that in order to return more students to school, we're going to have to have another significant outlay of PPE, or in this case, barriers, Plexiglas barriers, that we may end up not needing. But it's important that everyone understands we, we pushed the deadline for the survey out so we could get more responses. We still only have less than maybe a 50% response rate. But now the work begins of identifying whether there's enough space for students to return, and then we'll determine whether or not we need to buy PPE. So that's an ongoing conversation. I know the middle school and high school have been reviewing that data. Our last set of survey responses came in as recently as yesterday. We may have some more coming in right now if they're watching our meeting, and that's a good thing. But that's part of the process. We can't just unilaterally allow everyone to come back and not be able to maintain social distancing or meet some of those requirements. So hopefully by, I would say, another, another week, midweek, we'll know what, what our full liability is. That basically means how many students would come back each day? And would we be able to educate them? And then the determination of what additional resources we need. So we're getting close. An early spring break sort of delayed it, but also wanted to make sure we gave parents an opportunity to respond to the survey. And, you know, again, less than, less than half did, but we need to move forward with the data we have.
Ally, you have a question?
Yeah. So the families that didn't respond, what happens to them? So what if they hear that their friends down the street are now going back and they want to come too? How are we going to respond to the non-responders?
Yeah, well, we first will, as I said, build mock schedules of those that wish to return more often and really determine if there's space. So for example, we had to make the hard cutoff when we offered the full remote model at the elementary school. And that model was full when we reached our class caps, because even in our 11 elementary remote sections, we still are following our class caps, even though we're digital. So we did have families that said, oh gee, I wish to be remote. We tried to find space or vice versa. We had families that, oh, I clicked the wrong box on the, on the survey. I don't want my child to be remote. I want them to come in. Or they came in after school started because of different situations. So we deal with them basically individually. What we'll need to do is, as we did earlier in the fall, we'll look at everyone who responded and then look at the non-responders and see if they're satisfied where they are. Perhaps they didn't respond because they're full remote and they're okay. Or they didn't respond because their child may have an IEP and is already coming in every day or four days a week, those sort of things. So there are some, there are some outliers and some variables, and I'm sure that may be, that may take care of most of them. But typically, it's the school counselors or the office staff that call to say, hey, we didn't hear from you. You know, what would you prefer if we can accommodate?
Okay. And so then the timing, just as a matter of whether we need to buy more PP or not. Quickly, we can make a pull trigger. Okay.
Yeah. And, and you know, part of the issue is, you know, we, we obviously track our attendance all the time. And when we do some dipstick measurements, we're, we're anywhere between, you know, maybe on a good day, half to 60% of the students who are eligible to be in for in-person instruction are. You know, it's just, it's just opposite day. A year ago, if you didn't come to school, you can't play sports. This year, it's don't come to school so you can play sports. You know, usually you had to come to school a year ago, had to come to school to be educated, to be counted. This year, you know, you can dial in remotely and, you know, we'll accept that and participate digitally. So we have some habits that this year created and also created some flexibility. So we're trying to, trying to provide a little bit of everything for everybody.
Anybody else have any questions about the return to full for?
Just, just, just a little one. I don't know how much we're allowed to do this, but in my son's school, yes, they have the same, same type of thing. You either go remote or you stay home. When we have finals, we just got a notice from his principal that you are required to go to school for your final or else you will fail. Do we have that option? Are we allowed to say that?
I don't.
We will make every accommodation for you. Like, I'm sorry, it'll be like math on one day, or I don't even know what finals we have. I know that all, most of the regions are not even happening. But do we have that within, I mean, he goes to a, he goes to a parochial school. So I know there's different things. But do we have that option to also say that?
I don't want to overcommit. I will tell you that we'll, we'll need to do a close reading of, of some of the executive orders and some of the guidance from the state education department. I don't believe we can. For example, I don't believe we can make anybody come in to take an assessment and hold them academically accountable if they don't come in to take it. But I want to check on that. And that's one of the differences, as you know, between, you know, private parochial, parochial and public schools is, you know, they have a little more flexibility with some of those processes and, and policies.
You're absolutely right. That's why I was asking. I just have one other, as a parent and as a teacher, seeing children in schools. Mr. Hockright is just saying that so many kids are opting to stay at home. Parents, I don't know if you, you know, maybe some of the kids are filling out these forms. I'm not sure. But if parents are listening, we know there's a lot going on with children these days. We're seeing children very quiet and, and, and stuff happening with them that otherwise wouldn't. So if there's any way that you could try to get your child back into school to start socializing again and being with each other, I think that's really, really important. So while parents are saying their kids are struggling, we also need some parents to help us get your children back in school. That's just my personal opinion. But I know that might help with some of the stuff that's going on in our young kids' minds and what they're doing and what's happening. So if you could do anything to help us out too, to get them back in and engaged again, I think that's a good thing. I'm speaking for myself, not everybody.
That's a, a good segue, your comment about assessments. I'm going to toss it over to Margaret to give an update on state assessments. She reported a couple of weeks ago, different rules and regulations and flexibility and the state asking some, some very unique, unique asks of school districts. So I'll let Margaret talk about state assessments.
So basically, right now, we're interested, more focused on the three through eight testing, which is literally two weeks away. We start with ELA at the end of April, and we roll right into math. And then science for grades four and eight shortly behind that. So we've been planning with the principals outreach to parents who's interested in taking the test. Most especially concerned about those remote students that might want to come in and take the test. How we will accommodate them in terms of space, supervision. Also, the fact that the test is not an all-day event. So transportation is a concern. So we had a meeting, a Google Meet this morning to kind of get the three elementary schools on the same page. John and Anisia have a separate plan at the middle school and the three principals are conduct, are putting together a letter that they'll share with families to finalize the expectation for ELA and for math. Right now, it appears as though it is not over burdensome for them to manage the remote students who do wish to come in and take the test. But again, you know, as we all shared today together, there's always the child who comes into school, who's in school every day, and at the last minute says, my mother doesn't want me to sit for the test. And then what do we do with that child in a COVID environment? So we're putting the final touches on what that will look like, and then we'll communicate with parents what to expect on the days of the test that will be administered, one grade each day separately. So one day for third grade, one day for fourth grade, one day for fifth grade. We only opted for book one, which in ELA is multiple choice. Same for math. So it will be, you know, we guesstimate that the average child may take an hour, maybe a little longer than that to go through the multiple choice. There's no reading of the test, obviously, in ELA, because that is the construct that is being measured. So there's a little less of the timing involved for this. But again, you know, we're working hard so that each of the three elementary schools presents the same information to our families. The region's experience, which is still several months away, is interesting because you really don't have to give the regions. If a child is passing the coursework, the state is sharing language to the effect that if a child is passing the coursework for a course that ends in Algebra One or English, you do not necessarily have to have that student take the test. If a child is failing, then the test will help them in terms of determining what happens next. We have a meeting tomorrow morning. Anthony Giovinazzi from the high school and Anisia Bell-Jefferson from middle school will be joining me, and Bosse is going to give us the last set of updates about the region's program. And there's a lot of communication in the region about that. Some districts saying, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to bother. All of our kids are passing. What's the point of having kids come and sit for this? The question that Lori brought up about finals is a big question this year, because so many of the courses that would normally end in a regions don't have that end marker. And so teachers are asking, am I now creating a final exam? And what does that final exam need to look like? Is there a timing requirement? So that is a bigger conversation. We still have time to determine what that will look like. And that will be the next set of things to discuss once we get past the three through eight testing in ELA and math. Any questions on that? Okay. And you know, the August regions have been canceled as well. So again, the same situation will apply. If a student is failing a course, they have the option of taking the course in a summer program. But if they pass that, then they are given credit for the regions in those two subjects, in Algebra One or. So we go forward from there. And, you know, each time we meet over the next couple of weeks, I'll continue to update you as the information is shared, both from our BOSSE, which is fabulous, and the information we gather from the state, but also from, with the information that we gather from one another regionally. So we, we stay in close communication with each other and always let each other know what district, different districts are doing and how they're approaching the guidelines that are provided for us. So I'll be happy to update us as we continue into testing season. Carol?
Along the same lines, the AP exams.
They're being administered. And I'm going to apologize because off the top of my head, I don't, I know Nick Katsaris at the high school is responsible for that administration, and he actually sent me a very detailed, lovely email about the process that we're undergoing to secure our students and to make sure students have what they need to take the test in terms of both access technically and location in terms of space, whether it's being done here or at home. So I'm, I will, I can get you that for the next board meeting, so everybody knows, but I don't have it off the top of my head. But Nick's done a great job organizing that for us. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. I assume those AP students know what they're doing, but I was just wondering, since we were talking the world of testing.
No problem.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay.
We'll toss it around to the team. We'll let Lisa and Laura give some brief updates. And I know Enrique's updates are going to be included in his presentation. So why don't we start with Lisa?
So I was very excited. I'm finally fully vaccinated and I was able to go into schools today. It's interesting to not look at people on a computer screen. We haven't seen each other in a year. So when you walk in with a mask, nobody knows who you are. So it's been quite, it was quite a day to see the, to see the teachers, but also to see the students and in a year how much they change. And you don't realize that, even though you sometimes see them on the screen. So today started my first rounds in the elementary school. So it was very exciting. We are planning our ESY program due to COVID and some of our students that came in as kindergartners or first graders, we're actually adding some ESY programs to the docket for the summer. At this point, I think we're going to be accessing three buildings just to not move classes at this point, because it's such an uprooting of students. So I think we are up to three, five, seven classes that we'll be offering this summer. And some of them are to replace some stuff that we couldn't do during the school year, like a skills, a social group, because we couldn't have lunch groups and bunches to work on social skills. So we are fully planning that. I'm looking forward to hiring the summer school principal to hand off the work and they can continue doing that. But that's what we've really been busy doing. And of course, the CSE meetings that we've been running since January.
Thank you. And I know that you've been reaching out to students whose, to families whose students are having social emotional problems.
Yes.
In the digital word, world, as Lori had mentioned, and trying to get them back into school. So.
It's, as Margaret said, our BOSSE is wonderful, and they just opened another connection type class about social emotional and the social development of some of our students. So we have a couple of people attending that to come back and turnkey. Something Joe shared with me was it's called being trauma trained. So we actually sent three people to be trauma trained, and they can only accept one application because so many people have applied. So Dr. Nguyen will be our representative, and she'll come back and she'll train two other, three other psychologists, social workers. And then we can work within the buildings, hopefully in the fall, when we have all the training done and all the hands-on materials that we need. So there's a lot out there right now for us to think about and to really, you know, start processing, especially when students are starting to come back full-time in the fall. And how are we going to handle that? Because some students will be school avoidant. So we have to be prepared, and this trauma training is going to be huge for us.
Anybody else comments, questions for Lisa? Okay.
Hey, Laura.
Sure, I'll be brief. As Lisa, you know, right before the break, I was able to get into the building. Claire Carey and Erica Denler invited me to help out with auditions for Little Shapahars, which was, is the spring musical and one of my favorite musicals. So it's a role I got to participate in, in helping with auditions when I worked at the high school. So I was really excited to get back. And it was just really wonderful to see the students and just interact with everybody again. So that was really fun. And I mean, that's why we do this work. So being with the students was just really cool. And I'm really excited for the musical this spring, and Claire and Erica are working really hard to figure out how they're going to pull this off. But you can't stop singing that song, those songs once you get it in your head. So on the other note, over the break, as I mentioned beforehand, or before the break, that we were going to do an upgrade to our access points for Wi-Fi. So last week, our technicians were really busy doing that. They replaced one-to-one, about 250 access points across the district. So we're in the process of looking to see any more access points that need to be done. So this summer, we're going to be supplementing the, you know, in addition to the one-to-one replacement we did. So that's been very exciting. And then, you know, just in the HR world, this is the time where we start planning for next year. So what does it look like? Who goes where? What kind of positions do we need to post? So we've already been starting to post for positions for next year. We're already, you know, Margaret's already in the process of interviewing somebody. So we're in that process, looking to fill, you know, any vacancies, retirements, movements, things like that.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Joe, you're up.
Well, I gave mine, my return to school.
Okay. And Enrique is gonna do his presentation on the budget presentation. So Enrique, you're up. Actually, no, we have committee reports before our presentation. So I guess I'm up. Anybody have a committee report?
I, it's not a committee, but I went to the BVPTA last night, and those people are amazing. And they, they love their school, and it's the place to be for them. And I, I listened with a big heart, and I'm sure we'll talk about it later, but they had a very good meeting last night.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Anybody else?
Excuse me. We had a finance committee, but I don't know if we're going to talk about that later with the budget conversation with Enrique or?
Yeah, I think we can roll that in with the budget conversation.
There was, there was also a safety committee meeting. And that, it went well. I think people may have remembered that the last meeting we had, we had in our consent budget, the safety plan updates, which are what I'd been talking about, that there was a new requirement, that there be a public health emergency section to the safety plan. So that was incorporated into that revision that we approved. And then there'll be the regular annual revision that we do with the summer. So just to be aware of that.
Forgot about that, Lisa. That was a little bit ago, right? That's our safety.
We never reported on it.
I know, I forgot.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So that now brings us to our presentation, which is our final budget presentation. Enrique?
Good evening, everyone. We're at, at that time of the year where the board will have to make the final decision. We made about 10 presentations, and this is the summary of those presentations and the conclusion of those presentations. So next one, please. Next one. So if you remember, that probably you don't, on January 6th, we started our preliminary budget of eighty, eighty-four point six million dollars. After some retirement and some adjustments to the budget, we are presenting an eighty-four point three million dollar budget that compares to eighty-two point one million dollars from last year. That's an increase of two point one million dollars or 2.6%. The tax levy is originally, we were expected to be at forty-nine point five million dollars. Today, we have it at forty-eight point four million dollars, an increase of four and a half percent compared to last year. Next. Cap information. As always, I bring the cap information because it's interesting, but really it's not important from, for us. The new, the New York State, State cap this year is 1.23%. If you remember, the cap is the lesser of two, of 2% or inflation. Inflation was 1.23%. So that's a New York State cap for us is 10.4%. And the reason is that any pilot payment lost goes against the cap. So any dollar that we lose in pilot payments, it goes against our cap. For Hendrick Hudson this year, our cap, our cap is fifty-three million dollars compared to forty-eight million dollars last year, or an increase of five million dollars. And obviously, we're not even close compared to forty-eight million dollars last year or an increase of five million dollars. And obviously, we're not even close to that number on the tax levy. Next. So these are our preliminary numbers compared to last year. State date, actually, today we got the final approval of the budget. I'm happy to say that I was within thirty thousand dollars of the state date. B O C eight, basically the same, very close to that number. Other income, close to a million dollars. Other income include, includes all the money that we get from other, other school districts to get, to educate their special education children. Auctions that we do, anything that we sell, insurance that we get paid, et cetera, et cetera. Sales tax is the tax, the proportional part of the Westchester cell tax that we get. Supposedly, all the Westchester sales that goes to school districts. I really doubt that, but this is a portion that I expect this year. The increase is due to the fact that last year, there was a one percent increase in the Westchester sales tax that it was not in our budget. We got about nine hundred thousand dollars last year. So I expect about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more. Transfer is money that we need to transfer to, to other of our funds. Fund balance, fund balance is a portion that we are using to reduce the tax levy. And that's one of the discussions that we had last Tuesday in finance committee. How much money in fund balance we should use so we can keep the tax levy at a reasonable increase. And we decided to use two point two million dollars, which is a million, a million dollars more than what we originally suggested to bring the proposed tax levy to four and a half percent. Then the next line is pilots. We all know about pilots and obviously the reduction in pilots is due to the Indian Point closing. And then for the first year, we are eligible for cessation fund and that's going to be eight point four million dollars. So our non-property tax revenue is thirty-five point eight million dollars. Our proposed budget is eighty-four point three. So the difference is a proposed tax levy, which is forty-eight point four million dollars. Our proposed budget is an increase of two point six percent. Like I, I said, the tax levy is four and a half percent. Again, the tax gap is fifty-three, fifty-three million dollars, which is a ten point four percent compared to last year. And finally, the contingent budget. The contingent, the contingent budget happens if the community decides to not approve the budget, to fold it down. In our contingent budget, the most that we can spend is eighty-two point two million dollars, which will be a two million dollar reduction in expenses that represents four point three, four point three percent of our tax levy. It means that we will have to reduce our tax levy by four point three percent. Next one, please. Here we have the historical numbers. At the top, you see the tax gap comparison. Up until nineteen twenty, you can see we were always lower than the New York State cap and the inflation. And then last year and this year, due to the Indian point, you can see that our tax gap is much greater than either inflation or the New York State tax gap. In the bottom graph, you can see the increases in budget and tax levy. And as you can see, also the tax levy increases in the past were either minimum or negative. And starting last year, our tax levy started increasing. Last year was five point nine percent. And this year, our preliminary estimate is four and a half percent. Next, please. This is how we divide our revenues. You can see it in the pie chart, what we saw to, to, to go slides before, but like that you get an idea of how big our proposed tax levy is compared to any other of our revenues. Next. As always, we need to present our expenses by government accounting. That means we need to present it divided in three, the instructional program, the administrative budget and the capital budget. Our instructional program is eighty-two percent of our total budget. Administrative budget is six point three and capital budget is eleven point seven. We strive to have at least eighty-two percent of our instructional program as part of our total budget. So this year, we barely made it. But we're still, we're still within the eighty-two percent that we strive to, to be in. Next, please. Any questions or comments?
Alex?
Um, so we're using the fund balance, which is, which is our savings account. If we were not using that two point two million dollars, what would have the tax levy been this year?
It depends how much we, we would decide to use.
Assume zero, if we did, if we borrowed none from the, the fund balance.
Every point in the tax levy is four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So we will have to multiply four hundred and thirty-six times four point five. So that's four point, four times four is a million six. Four times a million six plus two hundred, a million eight. Basically, basically, we will have to increase the tax levy by that, that complete, that complete amount that will bring the tax levy increase by four and a half by two, four, four times four, by about five percent.
So nine?
Percent.
But, but it's a savings account. So we can't do this every year because eventually we just run out of money in the fund balance.
That's correct. Planning to do this every year. Actually, the idea is that we are putting more money this year because next year we're going to do the Princeton plan and we're going to use less fund balance. Today, we have about eleven million dollars in fund balance. So we're using two point two. So every year going forward, we're going to be using money out of that, out of that fund balance. This year, I expect to have between two and a half and three million dollars of fund balance. So for this particular year, basically, our savings of this year, we're going to move them for next year. And we're still going to have a little bit of savings. So our form balance either will increase by, I'll say, half a million dollars to close to eleven million dollars or stay the same. But without any doubt, this is not sustainable over the long term. This is the, this is a one-time decision that the finance committee decided to propose because of the difficult situation of some of the community members due to COVID.
Thank you.
Corey, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, you know, want to be clear, Enrique. It just, you know, with the cessation fund and all the, the other funds that we are getting, these are also going to run out too, right? The, the pilot that we're getting is going to continue to decrease. And the cessation fund is going to continue to potentially decrease over time. Right? So eventually, we've got to make that up one way or the other.
That's correct.
So, so the, you know, I think in, in the long run, we have to figure out, you know, do we want the tax increases to look like a hockey stick? Or do we want them to be gradual, which is what the fund balance is helping to accommodate with that? If we don't have additional significant savings, you're going to get more of the hockey stick when it comes to taxes.
Actually, the idea, Corey, that we decided at least for this year to let it go because of the COVID situation is that our next seven to eight years, we will have increases of about four and a half, between four and five percent like that. You don't have the hockey stick. So in the years, for example, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we have several maturities of bonds. So we're going to be saving about two to three million dollars. That particular year, I'm not planning to use any fund balance. And that particular year in my projections, we have an increase in tax levy of about four percent. So that's what I, that's what I'm trying in all my projections is to be sure that we don't have peak and valleys, that suddenly one year, if my, my tax levy increases half a percentage point, but the following year is eight percent.
Right.
I prefer to have two or four percent.
Yeah.
So that's the idea. And with those four percent, we will, in eight years, we will make up all the pilot payments, payments that we lost. And that's when the cessation fund and our form balance will be depleted.
Yeah. So after about 10 years, it levels off.
After 10 years, I, I expect to be like any other district at the cap of no more than two percent.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And, and Corey, if I may, just to, just to give everyone a look in the rearview mirror. So from two thousand thirteen to nineteen, our average tax increase over that time was one point zero four percent. Last year, the budget got approved at a tax levy increase of five point nine. And this year, we're proposing four point five, which could have been astronomically higher as, as, as Alex, as Alex asked. Now, when Indian Point announced their closure in twenty seventeen, the idea, the cessation fund was not on our radar. We didn't even know what that was. So we did projections, Enrique did projection, we shared them with the community as, as an awareness and advocacy tool, saying that taxes would have to increase thirteen percent each year for four years, starting last year in twenty twenty, in order to make up the delta from what we were expecting to receive from Indian Point to what we did. So we, we, we started with a high of thirteen and, you know, we're more than, we're more than halfway below that, which is still a sting to taxpayers because, you know, we, we're used to a one percent increase, but it's certainly not the thirteen. And again, this goes back to a financial predicament that we were put in because Indian Point's closure. I mentioned the cessation fund. I want to use this as one more opportunity. The cessation fund is state money that offsets the pilot. All right? It's not additional, it's not a grant, it's not for special use. It's money to avoid the hockey stick. And I want to be super clear that folks understand that, that these are dollars that offset the reduction of the pilot that we use to pay the bills, that we use for general use, right? We, we buy supplies and equipment and pay salaries and all of those things. So the cessation fund is not this pile of money that sits outside of our budget that is above and beyond or, or supplemental. It is part of our revenue stream and, and we need it badly in order to, you know, not have huge tax increases or not have widespread program reductions.
Thank you.
I just want to mention Alexandra's question about not, not using any form balance. I just want to to make aware, aware, the whole board that since I started working here in two thousand and eight, every single year, even the tough years of two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, we use form balance. Some years more, some years less, but it, it's always been part of our budget. So saying nine percent increase, that would, we always use at least one or two percentage. So in that sense, I want to make it clear that we always use at least the half a million dollars of form balance.
Uh, Bill, did you have anything to add? Oh, sorry, Corey, go ahead.
That's all right. But there, there is a restriction on how much fund balance you can, how much you can actually put into fund balance in normal years. Right? You, you can't use it as a savings account in most normal years. We're, we just have an exception at this point.
Actually, we don't even have an exception. The board has agreed that we will be slapped by the state controller that we have more, more than we are allowed to by law because of our situation. So, and the state controller understands it. And when we had our audit and they saw that, they said, that's against the law, but we understand it and we're not saying anything. But it, it, for any other school district, they cannot have more than four percent of unassigned phone balance compared to your next year budget. And we have about 10%.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. Yeah. Enrique, just so I can understand better here with the, if the budget were to fail, which of course we hope it doesn't. But if it were, does that mean the tax levy would be at four point three percent, four point three one or?
No, 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 no. The tax levy, the increase will be zero.
Okay, so.
The way, the way you calculate your, your new budget is by adding the non property tax revenues that we said were about thirty-six more million dollars to last year's tax levy. So the tax levy will be as a zero percent increase. When you are in contingent, it means that you have to use last year's tax levy.
So last year's tax levy was five point nine two. So does that mean we're using a tax levy of five point nine two?
Well, Greg, it wrinkles back, please, to the more, more, more there. Thank you. Last year, the tax levy was forty-six point three million dollars. If we are in contingent budget, our tax levy is going to be exactly the same, forty-six, forty-six point three million dollars, which is an increase from last year to this year of zero.
Right.
But then people are still going to be paying taxes though. So what?
Of course. But there's going to be, if you were paying ten thousand dollars last year in school taxes, this year, you're going to pay ten thousand dollars in school taxes. So from last year to this year is zero.
Okay.
Next year is zero.
But, but net wise, right? Because expenses are contracted to go up around two percent on average, right? We have no choice that there will be expenses that have to go up, which means we have. which means we have to make up that difference through cuts of significant cuts of programs and faculty and staff, which is what nobody wants.
Exactly. And that's why I said in the last, in the last row, we will need to make two point million dollars of expenses that represent four point three one percent of the levy. So, yeah, I mean, just imagine eh, having having to cut two million dollars in expenses if you take into account that the average teacher with eh, benefits make a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There you are. You need to cut how many? Sixteen teachers, eighteen teachers?
But it's effectively more because things like raises and benefits continue to go up in cost. So you have even let you have even more than you need.
Yeah, but when I tell you a hundred and twenty thousand is next year's a hundred and twenty thousand, you know, eh, the average teacher, not this year, next year, will be making a hundred and twenty. So you need to cut about eighteen teachers.
Yeah.
I mean, eh, and if it's not only teachers, it's teachers, eh, teacher rates, everything. But at the end of the day, eh, 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 a teacher rate makes with benefits thirty thousand dollars. So you need to cut, you know, how many? A hundred seventy teachers?
Plus, there are restrictions on what we can spend our money on, right? We have additional.
Yeah, the only restriction is that if we cannot spend more than a matter, don't quote me on this, but a seven percent or six percent of the total budget in administrative. I see eh, 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 very likely, we might need to cut some administrative expenses. But again, we haven't even started there. When when you need to cut two million dollars, eh, eh, you need to look everywhere, absolutely everywhere. You need to look at transportation. You'll need to look at teachers, teacher rates, custodian, secretaries, absolutely. Everyone gets affected.
Um, I have one additional question. Now, this budget proposal, I just want to make clear to the public, does not include eliminating a team from the middle school. The finance committee decided we would leave that money in because of all of the uncertainty due to COVID and students coming back. And we just wanted to leave that that cushion in there, so to speak, so that we had a little more wiggle room. So there, we've included having the teams as they are in the middle school currently.
Again, the I I I agree, Carol. This budget maintains every program, everything like we have it this year.
Right. The only thing we did was add extra fund.
Yes.
Yeah, we we used to call these rollover budgets. It's usually how we start our budget process. If we take everything we have now, roll it over to the next year, what the what the balance is. Obviously, we we investigated some other potential reductions, given this really is the first year of of the major reduction of Indian Point Pilot. And the committee believe that this this one time opportunity really to inject more fund balance as revenue was important to do for a number of reasons. For student supports coming back, whether it be this spring or next fall, and to try to give is is big of a break to the taxpayer, given whatever financial situations they've been dealing with because of COVID.
Um, before we move along, I know Mary Pat was having trouble unmuting, and I don't know if she was able to solve that issue, but I do want to give her a chance to make comments, questions, if she would like to. Greg, can you check in with her and see if she has that issue resolved? It looks like her phone still has the, you know, the mute symbol on there.
I just tried to ask her to unmute.
Enrique, while we're waiting for her, I don't know if you have this number. How many entities pay taxes? Meaning, how many houses are there? How many businesses? How many entities do we collect taxes from? Do you know that?
I used to know that. I I'll ask Town of Portland and I'll I'll tell you next board meeting. Unfortunately, I don't remember, but I remember about five, six years ago, a board member asked and I I called the Town of Portland and they gave me the number. I'll I'll be sure to have it for the next board meeting.
Okay. Also, keep in mind, like, some teachers are my age, right? So we're kind of, look, I don't want any teacher to retire because I happen to think your best ones are my age, to tell you the truth. But um, also noticing that too. So I think we're going to have quite a few who are my age, who might not be, maybe over the next five or six years, might choose to put their butts in the sand after a while on the beach. Right? I'm I'm thinking maybe that too. So that would save quite a little bit bit of money too.
It 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 does, but that's part of a school district, you know. Eh, eh, every year, we have between seven and twelve teachers retiring. Obviously, this year that we needed more, we only have four. So eh, eh, if this year we have four, probably next year we are going to have fifteen because it taberage out over the long term, you know, everyone, everyone basically has the same idea. I want to work, max, max out my TRS and then why to continue working here if I can do something else and have to salary. So it's it's part of the culture.
Right. How many more bonds do we have coming to expiration in the next like decade?
All of them, but the the new the new capital project. That means in twenty three, twenty twenty four, we have the ones for the two thousand and four. That was two of seventeen million dollars. Then eh, we have the six point nine and the four point six. And then we will only have, if we don't, hoping that we don't have anything else.
That's not me, by the way.
That so we will only have the, we will only have the these eighteen and a half million dollars.
What was the um, what was the one from two thousand and four? Two point seven, twenty seven? What'd you say?
Well, two of seventeen million. There were one, one next to the other one of seventeen million. It was a total of about forty two million, thirty four million, something like that. I can tell you.
You don't have to. I'm just, I'm just looking at different ways that money should be eventually coming in. When the bonds, bonds go away, some of the, I'm just looking at different things, that's all. But I would love if you could give me that number of the entities that pay taxes, whether it be a business or a home.
Yes, I understand. How many?
They can property.
How many entities are are in our touch?
Right.
That's what you want to know.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to give Mary Pat a minute to, we're trying to reboot her here so that she can rejoin the conversation. Anybody else have questions in the meanwhile? All right, I have a housekeeping question. Do you guys want to have a break before we go to audience comments? Five minutes, stretch your legs, get some water break. We'll finish up this discussion and then have a short break and then come back for audience comments and our policy reading.
And you need to vote.
Oh, yeah, we'll vote first, but we have to have Mary Pat wait in before we do that.
Sure.
That's what I meant by finish this section, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in favor of recess.
We can recess.
I just heard her. Pat, I can hear you.
Yeah, I just said, I know, I just signed back in. It was star six. That was the only thing. That's what I was asking.
Oh, well, okay, that's good to know for the future. I don't know how to do it on my phone because I use my computer audio, and that's a whole different thing. But um, I, we were just, I was just asking if anybody wanted to stretch your leg break before the next section while we were waiting for you to sign back in. And the consensus was, yes, we'd like a stretch our leg break, but we need to finish the board resolution on the on the budget first. And if you have any questions or comments, you've got the floor.
No, my main thing was just to, you know, again, I was just to clarify with Alex because she was asking about the use of the fund balance, and we have used it every single year.
Every year.
So, yep. So I thought that was important that, you know, that she be aware of that, that this wasn't just some random thing to, you know, offset. It was actually something. And frankly, it's less this year than we've used in the past. I mean, this wasn't, we've used more, we've used less. But this was a, um, this was, this was not an extraordinary amount, so. But, you know, that was, that was what I wanted to make sure. But Enrique did cover that. So thank you, Enrique.
Yes, thanks.
All right. So is everybody happy with the budget here? Because we're going to vote on our resolution and then we don't have the opportunity to change it afterwards. So any last minute comments or questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolution as stated?
Oh, I've never seen that before.
Moved.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Mary Pat, since I can't see your hand, were you in yay or nay?
I said I.
Okay. All right, all in favor. So we're going to take a five to 10 minute recess to stretch our legs and get some water. And then we will come back for our audience comment section. All right, we'll see in a few. All right, we'll see in a few.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now I am.
Okay. All right, Greg, I think we're ready to start again.
All set.
Okay, welcome back. We are ready for our audience comment section. And Carmen, I believe we have some comments this evening, correct?
Yes, we do. Good evening, everyone. Do you want me to begin, Carol?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, before we begin, let me remind everybody that you can pick up packets for board trustee candidacy if you so wish. And they are due back on, to Carmen, on April 19th with signatures attached. Just a little reminder, there are two trustee seats up for election this year. And we do have comments this evening. You can see on your screen the guidelines for the comments being made. And those are published on board docs as well. I forgot to pull the sheet out this evening, but you can see them there in front of you. So Carmen, I think you can go ahead.
Okay. The first comment came in from Jennifer Monks-Bacher. "Our community, we have been polling our community for several weeks now about the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of implementing the Princeton Plan at the Hendrick Hudson School District. Weaknesses that stand out are the longer bus rides and the more frequent transitions for younger grade students. The strengths that continue to be discussed are the ability to provide an equal education to all district grade stu-, school students, and our capability to provide our children a learning experience with all their peers in the school setting designed for their grade level. While I understand the kids may be on the bus for longer, this change will be true for all students, not just one group of students. Creating equitable experience for all. And while transitions will be more frequent, our stakeholder committee has heard from outside districts that this adjustment doesn't, does not negatively impact our students. The students adjust to new settings, find strength and confidence with these changes, and develop long-lasting friendships with more children in their community. The strengths are about education. We should be committed to providing the best education for all our children. The Princeton Plan allows us to embrace our entire community for one day, first day of kindergarten. Each student is a student of Hendrick Hudson. Kids will be able to identify with each other, not by which section of the district you live in, but as classmates and peers. There will be no longer, there will no longer be the segregation we see in the grade schools today. With change comes fear, fear of the unknown and fear of failing. But it's a known fact that the community schools are not equitable. But not developing a plan to ensure an equitable education to any one school, we are falling, failing our, all our children. We have to remember that education is no longer just about learning to read and write, it's about experiences. It's about providing our children with experiences and life skills to allow them to succeed. Teaching our children that there are often many ways to get the right answer, but it's the behaviors that we exhibit that ensure success. Grade-level teaching environments allows teachers to work with each other more cohesively. It offers the possibility of providing our children with appropriate experiences beyond typical classroom that we see today in our schools. Without the Princeton Plan, it will be hard to provide our children with new innovative learning because we will always be fighting to make ends meet. While this decision may appear to be about reaching the bottom line on a budget, but the bottom line is by not implementing this Princeton Plan, we are risking the education of a third of our population. We are telling parents, students, and teachers of a third of this district that it's okay that they continue to struggle, to struggle in silence. Sincerely yours, Jennifer Barker."
Thank you Ms. Barker for your comment.
The next email that came in was from Nancy Henning. "Dear Board of Education members, thank you for taking the time to read this letter and hear my perspective on the Princeton Plan. Over the last few weeks, I have made it a priority, priority to attend as many Princeton Plan forums and sessions as possible, to ensure I will be versed on the plan as well as its merits and shortcomings. Based on all the information I have learned, this plan is not a better academic model and is not intended to improve the academics of our district. It is being, is being considered solely for the tax savings it can provide. I do not support the transition of the Princeton Plan for our school district. I do not think it is the right fit for our district and it is not the right fit for our family. We moved here to be part of an exceptional school district with a consistent, small field community school for our kids, while they are in the formative years of their education. We chose this district for the consistency and relationships we would build with the staff and teachers. We did not choose to have our children shuffled around between schools and shuttled all over the town to solve budget prob-, a prob-, budget problem, which honestly works out to be 387 a year for us after three years. This is 1.6 per day. Some people spend more than that on coffee. I would gladly spend that for better education for my children. I suspect families considering moving to our area in coming years would feel the same. I sincerely hope you vote against this plan and when it finally goes to vote, especially against the notion of forcing this kind of change on families in the midst of a pandemic, with vaccines still unavailable to children and working situations still tenuous for many families, for many family, families, you will be elected to represent our voices. Please listen to them. Thank you for, for your time. Nancy Henning."
Thank you, Ms. Henning.
The next email came in from Frank Dominguez. "Good evening. My name is Frank Dominguez and I'm a proud member of the Hen Hut community. I would like to firmly oppose the adoption of the Princeton Plan in our school district. Ever recently finding out about the district's desire to move to this plan via Facebook nonetheless, I started doing research on the topic. I began watching old meetings on YouTube, reading parent comments online pertaining to the discussion, and researching nearby town with the plan. I've been unable to find anything that shows the learning experience will be better for my children in this plan, is, if this plan is forced upon us. No data has been presented to my knowledge that factually shows how this is going to help my children's education other than a tax savings compared to status quo, which is the increase no one wants to bear. But unfortunately, we all, all in some capacity, either, either way, as I don't want to get into the specifics of what I really believe is driving certain parents in this district to push the Princeton Plan on the rest of us. I will say that I do feel that the overall plan will not help the success of my five-year-old, three-year-old, and newborn to flourish in the school that my wife and I chose when we moved here in 2019 with our young, growing family. When we decided to move to Cortland, we specifically looked for houses in the school zone that we felt was better for our children. Paying higher taxes was a sacrifice that we decided to make to have our children in our desired school in Hen Hut. I recently looked at a couple of polls that were done online by community residents and over 70% of the parents who participated said no, no to the Princeton Plan. In my zip code, it was even higher opposed than that. Indian Point closing and the financial uncertainty of the school district shouldn't be the opportunity of getting more, more than less depending on where you live. I think as a parent, you really should look in the mirror if you think laying off teachers, expanding class sizes, and doing away with extra programs is best for our kids. Even as a homeowner in the district, without children attending these schools, I think allowing this to happen will be a shortcoming to the overall desire to keep young families moving to the Cortland like many are at this very moment and eventually selling your homes at a higher value due to, due to a poor district. As a final point, if your designated school is an issue and is underperforming, we as a community should be focusing on doing what's best to better the specific school. I think all the other parents in the Hen Hut district would help push the board to help rather than adopting the Princeton Plan to achieve equality, as I've seen it mentioned. I truly believe in a democratic nation, this should come down to a district vote. I'm unaware of board seats, I am unaware if board seats are elected or appointed, but I'm sure if this goes through without proper community input, there will be new faces in many of those chairs amongst you from unhappy residents. As I stated before, as a parent of three, I found out via Facebook group, and that's pretty sad with something as of this magnitude. Thank you for your time. Stay safe. Good luck."
Thank you, Ms. Frank Dominguez.
The next email came in from Lisa Cole. "Good evening. I'm writing to express my support of the implement, implementation of the Princeton Plan. I'm a lifelong resident of this community. My mother is a graduate of the Hendrick Hudson, as well as both of my in-laws. I do not currently have children attending school within the district. However, I am a current taxpayer. I believe that moving forward with the implementation of the Princeton Plan will increase the value of our homes as there will be an equal playing field for all incoming students at the elementary levels. Is my hope that restructuring the district by grade level instead of zip code will bring new families to the area and help remedy just decreased enrollment of our district has experienced. By implementing the Princeton Plan model, class sizes will be more uniform across the district, allowing all students access to the same level of intervention and teacher attention. Restructuring the district in this way will provide elementary students the opportunity to build friendships with peers outside of their zip code. Grade-level teachers will have the opportunity to work together and target their instruction to meet the needs of the students, problem-solve, share ideas, and successful interventions. Is my hope that the board will move for, move to formalize the implementation of the Princeton Plan this evening. I look forward to seeing the growth of this district and the reunification of our community as one. Thank you, Lisa Cole." I gotta plug my-
Thank you, Ms. Cole, for your comment.
The next comment, email came in from Tina Rickett. "I was informed, oh, Carmen, I was informed that you were the contact person for the, for thoughts of the upcoming vote on the Princeton Plan. My husband, a former school board president, is in favor of the Princeton Plan. I'm a retired Hen Hut teacher with some concerns comments regarding this pending vote on the Princeton Plan. I taught first grade at BV for 20 years. My class sizes were always either at cap or close to cap. Historically, Furnace Woods class sizes at that time were significantly lower. Issue of the Princeton Plan was raised in the district several decades ago. Objections of that time were probably the same as those currently. Furnace Woods teachers and parents were against the plan for several reasons. A long, a longer bus ride for children, a decline in property values, and the perceived negative association with BV students. It basically became a socioeconomic class struggle between neighborhoods. Unfortunately, the best interests of the children were not considered. The argument for maintaining neighborhood schools really didn't have much validity as no children actually walked to school. Best, the benefits of the plan were never fully explained. The end result was redistricting, and many Furnace Woods children ended up at Buchananver Plank. This time around, I believe one of the main issues is a cost-saving measure on the part of the district. The loss of tax revenue is a reality that needs to be dealt with. The Princeton Plan would be the great equalizer for students district-wide. More and longer, there would be the huge disparity in class size. The educational benefits would be significant. Teachers would have wonderful resources with all their, with all their colleagues from one grade to the same building. Eliminating the stigma currently held by some in the community about the BV students is paramount. I've heard the phrase "separate but equal" used to describe the elementary schools in our district. This is absolutely not the case. It needs to, to change for the benefit of our students. My hope is the board will vote to institute the Princeton Plan. Sincerely, Tina Rickett."
Thank you, Ms. Rickett, for your comment and for your husband's service on the school board.
The next email came in from Tamika Dietrich. "Dear Board of Education, I'm writing to this letter to express my support for the Princeton Plan being implemented. I live in Buchanan and have had the best experience with all my neighbors, school staff, and school parents at BV. And I'm in shock by the response of some of the things I'm reading on social media on the website by parents. Our focus should be the, the children and how this will impact them and prepare them for the future. And keeping our schools separate will not accomplish this. We are all Hen Hut and should have a whole-school approach to the elementary schools that works for all families, not just a few. I'm a mom of a kindergarten and all I want is for him to have the best experience, make friends, and have all the opportunities that our tax dollars pay for to ensure his success in the future. It should not be acceptable to any parent in the same district to have to choose between their children having 11 kin, 11 kids in a class, while some have more than 20. We are all a part of the same district and all the class sizes should be the same across the board. Why should some children be given more of the one-on-one while some teachers struggle with large class sizes? We should not be asked to pay more in taxes so that the status quo is kept, especially since most of our residents do not have students in the school system now, and it will be a huge burden for some families with, with a tax increase. The Princeton Plan will allow all of us across the Hen Hut Elementary School District to have the same resources, class sizes, and equal opportunity for our children and allow them to grow with their peers. The success of that, the kids will have with more resources, exposure to new children, and the diversity it will bring to this community itself is worth doing this for their future success in the world. Thank you for your time. Tamika Dietrich."
Thank you, Ms. Dietrich, for your comment.
Okay, and we, we received few comments, quite a few comments during the meeting tonight, and I will read them as well. So let me just get settled. Can you hear me, Carol? Okay. Let me just take a drink of water, sorry.
Take your time, Carmen.
The first email is from Jeremy Basso. "I'm sure you have received many notes from the community comprised of the varying positions of our community as a result, as it relates to the Princeton Plan, including those who favor, oppose, and are undecided. I would like to share a few concerns as well as a couple of points regarding the inequities that have been mentioned in BV. The Princeton Plan at face value sounds wonderful, however, is broken in the manner we intend to implement. Austin stated that we wish it was only a two-building system. If we are doing Princeton Plan for equity, why can't we have 2K2 and 135 building? why can't we have two K-two and one three-five building? Transitions and inconsistencies in routine are troubling for pets, puppies, much less kids. My wife is is a boardified certified behavior and analyst, and one of the first things they do to encourage positive behavior modifications is to establish a consistent routine. We'll be forcing our families to make to change buildings four times once they reach sixth grade. The incoming kindergarten class of two thousand twenty-one will have five building changes except for those kids who will do kindergarten in their community school, and then then they have that schoolhouse K-one on a go-forward basis. This is an incredibly high number of changes and frankly, it's unhealthy. Kids need adult connections and your plan is going to make certain that will never happen. Fifty percent of every elementary building will be brand-new every year forever. This is not equitable. It's simply sharing a terrible experience equally. It disallows modeling of our children's or of older, it disallows modeling of older older kids' behavior, and while some of the behavior is undesirable, it creates teaching opportunities that can last a lifetime and shape character. A view of only a year ahead or a year behind does not foster development. Many will argue it will act as a hindrance. Many of the answers provided to our community are political-type responses and not direct and are not necessarily intellectually honest. They're crafty and seem misleading. People who ask about real estate valuations were given examples of communities with Princeton Plan that has that also have high real estate values. What was conveniently admitted is the response was that each of the three districts that were referenced and have the Princeton Plan as well as having competitive housing markets have only two elementary schools unlike our three-school proposed model. Men, how many of you would buy a home in a community with three elementary schools and lots of transition prepared to go into Yorktown? Somers, Croton, etc., where there is not that the experience? I wouldn't, and frankly, I'm considering moving out of the district because I find the transition you all voted to implement to be completely unhealthy. With respect to the inequities in BV, what is being done to address them now, it's April seventh, you must you have almost three months' demand change for the rest of this year and and all of next year as well. I haven't heard next, I have heard next to nothing in terms of an effort.
Carmen, it's been three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Basso.
The next email came in from Eric Block. Good evening. My name is Eric Block. I'm a parent of two second graders at FGL and a seventh grader at BMS. I'm writing to you tonight regarding the proposed move to Princeton Plan. It's important to note that I am a teacher in the Austin School District and the second vice president of Austin Teachers Association. I'm certain that you're aware that the Austin file is the Princeton Plan model. I do think this configuration is beneficial in the sense that all students of the school community have an opportunity to learn and grow together. In the specific case of our district, the plan will also be be of benefit to students in special education programs who will no longer be required to travel in different schools in order to receive services. Having a having taught twenty years in a district employs the Princeton Plan means that I'm not coming to at you with hypothetical or assumptions. I speak from experience. The Princeton Plan makes schools makes schools' school articulation much more challenging. Student information and information regarding programs is not easily communicated between elementary buildings. A loss of fourteen teachers will have a negative impact across the district. Last week, Board of Education members stated that this move has many educational benefits. In the case of the Hendrick Hudson School District, I couldn't disagree more. Classes, class sizes will increase. Higher teacher-student ratios will result in worse educational outcomes. This is a research-based fact. Larger class sizes lead to increased difficulty when it comes to individual instruction. It will be harder to reach the needs of each and every child. A school district with fewer teachers is never positive for students or the entire school community. I know many of the community are concerned about the longer bus routes for your for our younger learners, although in my opinion, this isn't the largest issue. I do share this concern. At the last Board of Education meeting, a member of the Board had mentioned that teachers are in favor of this plan. I have a question to that statement. I am friends with and have spoken to many educators across the region and and a few in this district regarding the issue, this issue. Not one teacher has shared a positive feeling regarding a move to the Princeton Plan. This is understatable. They understandable. They know what the proposed teacher losses will mean. They know the negative impact that 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 cutting fourteen dedicated individuals will have. Finally, I ask you this. As you approach a final decision, how is it that you haven't sent out an updated survey to the community? We need to get more up-to-date data on how the district's residents feel about this proposition. Shouldn't the decision reflect the feeling of the community that you serve? This is a decision that will be felt for years, decades, and generations to come. Is a decision that should be made, should not be made in haste. Thank you for your service to our community. I will I will welcome future conversations regarding the education of our community's youth.
Thank you, Mr. Block.
This email came in from Nancy Henning. Hi, can you please raise this question related to the budget? I'd like some clarification. If a three million, if three million is a typical or or amount less than typical that we take from the fund balance each year, why is it framed as the two million we would have to pull from the fund balances stay with status quo would be a big deal? The board stated numerous times tonight that we take money from the fund every year and three million is less than most years. Thank you, Nancy Henning.
Joe, can you follow up with Ms. Henning this week?
Sure.
Thank you.
The next next email came in from Chrissy Archacki. I'm using the two million, two million from fund balances to offset the budget gap. It didn't, didn't you know all along that we needed to spend extra money from the fund balance? We were able to save because of COVID. Why wasn't this factored into the budget? Princeton Plan has pushed to has pushed to close a budget gap that doesn't exist for this year. I understand. We need to address it down the road, but adding to this this to the budget, the night of the budget meeting seems less covert. Conversations on Princeton Land might have gone differently if the budget looked like this, but looked like it does at this moment. Okay. That came from Christine Archacki.
All right, thank you. Joe, can you follow up with Ms. Archacki as well? Thanks.
Next one came in from Mariella Castaquela. As you read this letter on the evening of April seventh, you are already aware that we formed a group to speak out against the implementation of Princeton Plan in front of the high school today. We came together as a family. We stood together united, parents from the Frank G. Lindsay Buchananver Plank in Furnace Woods. There were many that were unable to join us due to work and childcare, but the support was certainly there as we have collaborated together in the last week. The passion for our children is is was heartwarming and purely genuine. Over the last week, I have spoken to hundreds of parents from all three elementary schools. I've been hearing a common message. They love their schools as they are and the community. From parents that attended Frank G. Lindsay themselves thirty years ago and want the same experience for their children to their children to parents that have just moved here from the city to give their children a six-year elementary experience in a tight-knit community. Our children may not all go to the same schools, but we are all one community. We attend, we attend the same karate classes, dance classes, gymnastics, or baseball games. Zip code of our elementary school doesn't define us. At first, we were told this was being done for financial reasons, and now we are being told it's done for equity reasons. If equity is the problem, let's work together to solve it. Let us work with the board as a community of stakeholders for our children. Maybe we can research some of the street addresses for students that currently attend Buchananver Plank or Frank G. Lindsay. Perhaps some of the students are close enough to attend Furnace Woods so that we can even out class sizes. If you need more reading teachers or E and L support at Buchananver Plank, then then provide more. Use our resources to the best of our ability. There are no solutions we are, we feel are not being considered. There are solutions that we feel are not being considered. Our voices are not being heard. The board needs to come together to identify the educational flaws and equity flaws and the best way to resolve them. The Princeton Plan is not the answer. As as a Hispanic family, I welcome diversity and integration. This is not the way to do it. There are solutions that do not involve uprooting and disrupting the emotional and academic academic stability of nine hundred to a thousand students. We beg you to put a hold on this vote and work with us to find a common solution that will please everyone and unite the rest of our community again. Marielle Castaquela.
Thank you, Mariella.
The next one, it came in from Amy Stithol. Dear sirs and madam, even though I received no reply on my previous message, I must implore you again to reconsider. The Princeton Plan will only make it life more difficult for families who are already just trying to get by. Transition every two years are are wholly wrong to expect of small children and will not foster a nurturing environment. Families will struggle to be actively involved in school events, and those who have multiple children will be discouraged to participate at all. You have not given us much to look forward to. What will Princeton Plan do do academic-wise that other methods cannot? Our neighboring towns that have taken on grade banding are now not showing significant significant improvement in grades. So what is the true reason Princeton Plan is being pushed through? The cost savings is largely insignificant for such an upheaval, especially after COVID. What the Board of Ed should be focusing on is how they can support students returning back to school after COVID. We are instead trying to force through a change that will negatively negatively impact hundreds of families, including the fourteen-plus teachers that you plan to lay off. A recent survey of district parents has shown that seventy percent of respondents are not in favor of the Princeton Plan. Currently, there is a huge protest protest ongoing at the high school. The community is mad. Have a conscience. Please say no. That was from Amy Stithol.
Thank you, Ms. Stithol.
The next one is from Leslie Hunt. In light of the protests this afternoon, I am writing to voice my support to the move to the Princeton Plan for elementary-age students. Here's why. I believe that this plan will improve instructional resources for all student learners in the district. Even though student student-to-teacher ratios may change, they will still there, there are still within the limits set by the district. Furthermore, student-to-teacher ratio is only one metric to consider when seeking to project possible student success. There's this, there is a significant educational data support, data to support that classrooms with diversity of students whose diverse backgrounds come in from forms of socio-economic level, language, race, ethnicity, and country of origin are environments in which all students fare far fair better. I think of this as a high tide, as hot, I'm sorry, I think of it as high tides raise all boats effect. Grouping students in the manner of the Princeton Plan allows for the strength of the of diversity to be harnessed in our educational setting. As a family who only recently moved to the district, I believe that the Princeton Plan will help build a broader and stronger stellar community. Given the geographic, given the geography of the town of Cortland and the history of the town's organizational structures, there are few common experiences for new families to plug into. There are diverse religious organizations, a wide variety of sporting options, activities that divide families across socio-economic levels, etc. Outside of the school in which they which you are affiliated, it is challenging to find common ground to meet to meet and engage with your neighbors. The Princeton Plan creates a common and shared experience for all families. This is a very attractive feature of our town to new families. In fact, I would consider it to be a selling point for future families to move to the district. Lastly, I understand this is creating a long-term reduction in instructional expense. The loss of any teacher job is a loss for our community. The loss of the pilot funds is inevitable and comprehensive view of how to create an operational budget within the shortfall in one in one that I have not yet seen. We moved here knowing our taxes would go up significantly, and we are prepared for this. We hope that the district will prioritize the quality of the education while seeking savings wherever possible. These decisions are very hard to make. We will have many, many tough decisions to make over the next few years. Getting started in any way to reduce expenses and to and to raise revenue is something I hope that will not has that you will not hesitate to do. You are navigating us, you are navigating a circumstance that you did not create, yet you're tasked with this difficult work. Thank you for taking this for you. Thank you for taking this on for our community. Wishing you the best as you navigate these waters. Leslie Hunt, Furnace Woods parent.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Okay, one more. I can't, this email doesn't have, let me see if it does has the person's name at the bottom of it. Hold on. Oh, William Archacki. As far as changing schools' organization with respect to the inequities in BV, what is being done to address them now? It's April seventh. You have almost three months' demand change for the rest of this year and all of next year as well. I have heard not next to nothing in terms of an effort to improve the educational experience that's being provided to these students. Is the responsibility of this board and its administration to make certain these failures don't exist? And while it is already happening, I'm appalled there is not a clear and meaningful change being made immediately to address this atrocity. I would love to understand why the principal is allowed to continue deciding what enrichment experiences are able are able to be introduced, offered, and which are not. It seems he has decided to have little to no opportunity offered in an effort to make things more fair for those without the financial opportunity to participate. This is absolutely unacceptable, and rather than rising tides lifting all ships, he has decided everyone receives less, which isn't isn't equitable at all. The district is wealthy. There are very good people here and other PTAs in district in district who would help cover those costs. My wife and I contributed to Furnace Woods PTA because we have kids in in school. And even though it is not our home school several years ago and for several years when they asked for support, and along with many others, would gladly cover any student who needs the support today, regardless of building. We do this for holidays and the middle school and would gladly do similar for any child, regardless of which building they attend, to make certain they can take advantage of all of all we have to offer as a district. We cannot continue, and what the Princeton Plan will not address is administrators who disallow experiences for all while because they don't have the interest to make sure all kids all kids experience what is the wonderful district has to offer. Fancy spins like a top. Maybe the other administrators should shadow their in-district peers who made it a point to make certain their building works for all students. Fancy is a big building. If they can do it, so can BV. The conversation started out about money and has become inclusive inclusion and equity. We don't need to uproot the district to make this change and start now. Frankly, I'm not confident the savings will be what we are told it will be once implemented. This raises another point. People are losing trust in the administration and frankly, this board. Hard questions aren't asked. When Enrique tells us that the environment environmental impact of additional busing will be mitigated by a hybrid fleet, no one asks when, how much it'll cost, etc. Lip service is cheap and is coming as a disservice to every person who tries to sell a home in a market that isn't hot and every person who bought a home in a district where they want their children to remain of in a familiar unit as long as possible in their home away from home, their community, elementary school.
Carmen, Carmen.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's the last email.
All right, thank you, Joe. I think you're touching base with the Archackis already. Maybe we can talk.
Carmen, there were a couple of more that were sent that I haven't have not been read.
Uh, they came from you, Lori. I just see you sent me a couple.
I just forward. I just forwarded them to you. They're not, they were written to us. It's it's from Michael Devine. It's from Andrea something. It's from Kylie. It's from.
They didn't come to me today during the day. When were they sent? They weren't sent to me during the day today.
They were sent ahead of time, so they were sent.
Addressed to to me.
April sixth. Well, it was sent to the board, so maybe they didn't know. But I don't know. Were they supposed to? I I'm assuming they thought sending them to us, meaning they would be read.
No, they were supposed to address them to me to say that it would be like to be read at the board meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for your comments. The most, many people know, I won't say most, but many people know that on the school website, there is a lot of information about the Princeton Plan under the tab that says cost analysis Princeton Plan, including a frequently asked questions section that might answer some of the questions that have come up this evening. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was having a technical difficulty there for a minute. All right, so that ends our public comment section. And next is our policy reading. Before we read the policy, I would like to just kind of review for the public how we've gotten to this point because this question comes up frequently. In January two thousand seventeen, Indian Point announced that they were closing. So the summer of two thousand seventeen, during our board retreat, our board does a retreat generally every every summer to set policy or to set goals for the district for the coming year. So that summer during our board retreat, we started looking at this, what we realized was going to be a monumental problem and engaged in a SWOT analysis, which many of you are familiar with now through our SWOT analysis. And we prioritized advocacy efforts and budget priorities at that point. The following summer in two thousand eighteen, after Mr. Hawk Rider, Mr. Enrique's advocacy efforts were engaged and bearing fruit, we had another board retreat. And at that point, we committed to reviewing our organization and configuration of our school, basically do a cost analysis to see if there were any possibilities of curbing expenses and mitigating tax increases. In November, in partnership with BOSI's and at the recommendation of our School Boards Association, the New York State Administrators Association and others, we identified Castillo and Silky to conduct a cost analysis. There are companies that actually do these for schools. There are not many, and we picked what we thought was the best one for our circumstance. They did a very in depth analysis. It took them a year or so from December two thousand eighteen to December two thousand nineteen. The cost analysis data was collected, site visits were done, conference calls, draft reports reviewed. And in November two thousand nineteen, our cost analysis was published and provided for the public and for the board. On December fourth, the cost analysis was presented at the board meeting. And on December sixth, there was a district wide email about the cost analysis and telling that the aim of the study was to examine the utilization of the district schools to determine if we would experience significant cost savings by either reorganizing our elementary students, moving the fifth grade to Blue Mountain Middle School, reducing class sections at the high school based on enrollment, amongst other things. On January eighth, the board discussed the cost analysis and we decided to accept the Princeton Plan to investigate as it was the only plan that was presented with measurable tax avoidance that did not eliminate any student programs for our school district. In February twenty twenty, John McCarthy, who we enlisted to insist us in the to assist us in this process, reviewed the SWOT process and introduced our stakeholder committee to the board, including who was going to be on the stakeholder committee and what their tasks would be. And we decided as a board, along with John, that the membership of the stakeholder committee, because we wanted it to be very broad, should include members of the administration, members of the staff, parents, community members. We would have liked to have students on there as well. And their charge was to actively participate in meetings and on guiding teams, fully understand the issues, study the problem, provide suggestions and feedback, and provide updates to those they represent and others. We also included community members in our business sector as well. In February, the stakeholder committee members were selected and the stakeholder was committee was created. In March, the stakeholder committee, and this is March twenty twenty, a year ago, the stakeholder committee was scheduled to meet. And unfortunately, that meeting had to be canceled because everything closed down because of COVID. So our work was postponed. It wasn't canceled, but it was postponed because we had a very daunting task in getting our students back to school for the fall and whatever method that we could. That took up a lot of time for our administration and our board members, but this work was very important. And we dedicated ourselves to continuing that work as soon as we could. So in November twenty twenty, our Princeton Plan Stakeholder Committee held its first meeting. More than thirty members participated. And on December second, we had updates from the from the stakeholder committee, and they received their, the board received their first public multi year financial projections comparing Princeton Plan versus non Princeton Plan. Throughout our budget season, we have been comparing our status quo budget with our Princeton Plan budget to give the stakeholder committee a chance to do their work. The stakeholder committee members were able to ask their own questions, do virtual site visits at schools. And as you know, the stakeholder then gave us a presentation of their findings. And we have been discussing those findings as well as other things, not just this past month, but for quite a while. So the culmination of this is that we decided to move forward with a policy reading to change our school attendance areas. And that is what we have this evening. So I need a motion to read the policy. Since this is a revision of a policy, we only need to do a first a single reading and a vote if we so choose. If this were a brand new policy, it would be required that it be brought back for a second reading since it's a revision. We don't have that obligation. Can I have a motion to read the policy?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Can we have a discussion first?
Can we read the policy? Can we read the policy and then have the discussion?
Sure.
Okay. Lisa, you want to read the policy?
School attendance areas, policy five one one zero. The Board of Education establishes and maintains attendance areas and boundaries within the Hendrick Hudson Central School District. Attendance areas and methods for determining attendance within the district may be developed or revised periodically to meet changing educational program requirements, community growth and development patterns, building capacities, population variables, et cetera. The board expects the superintendent to keep appraised of the status of enrollment for each attendance area. The board will review proposed changes along with the supportive data submitted by the superintendent and his or her administrative team. After an intensive review, the board will hold a public hearing on the proposed changes before any formal action is taken. Each student in grades six through eight in the Hendrick Hudson Central School District is required to attend the district's middle school. Each student in grades nine through twelve in the Hendrick Hudson Central School District is required to attend the district's high school. For the twenty one twenty twenty one twenty twenty two school year, each student in grades kindergarten through fifth grade in the Hendrick Hudson Central School District is required to attend the elementary school serving the attendance area in which his or her residence is located, except as set forth in sections one through three below. One, pupils of the Hendrick Hudson Central School District requiring special programs located in the school other than the one serving his or her attendance area. Two, a pupil who moves from one attendance area to another within the Hendrick Hudson Central School District after October fifteenth will be allowed to complete the school year in the school serving his or her former residence. At the end of the school year, the child must enroll in the school serving his or her new residence. An exception to this requirement may be made for a pupil who is about to enter or has entered fifth grade. In such a case, the student may be allowed to complete his or her elementary school program in the school serving his or her former residence. The superintendent, upon his or her sole discretion, may assign a student to another school under extraordinary circumstances. All parent requests for exceptions to the elementary school attendance areas pursuant to two and three above are to be made annually inviting by June first to the superintendent for review for the following school year. If an exception to the elementary school attended zone is granted, transportation to the elementary school outside of the student's attendance area shall be the responsibility of the parent, with the exception of students and special education programs. For the twenty twenty two twenty twenty three school year and each school year thereafter, the three elementary schools within the Hendrick Hudson Central School District shall be organized such that one elementary school will be dedicated to grades kindergarten to first grade. Another elementary school will be dedicated to second grade and third grade. And the third elementary school will be dedicated to fourth and fifth grade. Each student in grades kindergarten through fifth grade in the Hendrick Hudson Central School District is required to attend the elementary school that serves the student's grade level.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, the policy is open for discussion.
I I had one question. So if we were to implement the Princeton Plan, what metrics would we use, both objective, quantitative, and subjective that would indicate whether or not we are getting the benefits that we had hoped from the Princeton Plan?
Sure, Corey, I can I can weigh in on that. I would take your question and I would I would even expand on it. I think this would be an opportunity for the district to to even provide a program evaluation on implementing the Princeton Plan, if that's the decision. Two weeks ago, we discussed potentially beginning the Princeton Plan in two thousand twenty two, so not this school year, but the one following. And I think that will give us an important opportunity to collect some baseline data so that we can have a program evaluation in the out years. So for example, not to recite everything that that Carol mentioned in terms of how we got here, but we got here through a cost analysis. The cost analysis was about efficiencies of organizing students by grade level. It would be very easy to project over a five, ten year period, as we have on the tax calculator, whether or not we met those goals. Basically, we would, if we were in the Princeton Plan, we would know what our expenses are at the elementary division. If we were not in the Princeton Plan, we would be able to extrapolate what our expenses would be if we maintain the status quo. Similarly, so that would be a budget to budget comparison, some quantifiable data. We would also be able to essentially build the three status quo elementary schools out in terms of enrollment within the three schools. If we stayed status quo, average class size, if we stayed status quo, and even school specific demographics within those schools. We would be able to track what those differences would be in the Princeton Plan compared to the status quo. Bus ride times, for example, Liz has bus ride times for our current status quo. Those don't change all that much, although sometimes stops do change and bus routes change. But for the most part, they're they're within a pretty narrow band in terms of times. We would be able to compare, you know, looking back bus ride times versus what bus ride times would be in the Princeton Plan. And I just, I want to go back to 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 bus times, maybe in a separate conversation. So right there are some really quantifiable measures that precipitated or I guess kicked off the discussion of the Princeton Plan. Now, educationally, we would be able to have a series, any number of student achievement benchmark assessments. We have benchmark assessments throughout the elementary school. We would be able to measure students' past performance or performance in the upcoming year based on our benchmarks. We use benchmarks because the state assessments, as I've said numerous times, do not give us credible information on kids or our practice. So we'd be able to to create some baseline measures, either either measures we already have or next year. And we would be able to gauge any improvement or any opportunities for improvement over the next few years. We could use data like attendance and discipline and those sort of things are are we track and we report those to to the state education department. Qualitatively, there are a number of qualitative measures that we could implement to track progress over time, you know, through a lens of a program evaluation. For example, engaging sixth grade staff or the sixth grade counselor or administrative team at the middle school to see how transitions are moving from fifth to sixth grade. For example, conversation at the in the SWOT analysis discussions where that the middle school spends a considerable amount of time introducing kids to one another in sixth grade. They do team building, icebreakers, trying to get kids to eat lunch with with kids from different elementary schools. And there's a lot of introductions that happen in sixth grade. And those are important because kids are coming from three different environments. So we would have some qualitative measures there. School counselor feedback around the transitions. A number of years ago, Lisa will correct me. It might have been Lisa Shuckman corrected me about two years ago. We added an elementary school counselor to the budget. That person will be will play a vitally important role in supporting students and families, as we've heard, with potential issues with transitions will be able to quantifiably, but certainly qualifiably be able to to track any improvement over time with students who may be struggling with transitions. And then the last two pieces and and you know, conversation for another day in terms of specifics. But conceptually, would be the student and parent experience. We have heard a lot about, you know, having families that will have multiple students in different schools or or students who may be hesitant or nervous about transitioning a little more frequently than we're used to. So we would be able to collect or or through focus groups or, you know, any other measure that's statistically significant would be able to sort of track and understand the student and parent experience and benchmark ourselves against that. I I think that if we make a change of this magnitude, we owe it to everybody, parent or not, ourselves to ask ourselves, how well are we doing? And we have to set that system up in advance so that we're not cherry picking different data. You know, it's it's got to be of statistical significance. It has to be informative, and it has to provide us feedback so we know if we got it right and will continue on the path. So we know if we have to make adjustments mid course. It's basically the RTI model where, you know, students are having an educational experience and we do a dipstick to see how everyone's doing. And the kids who are doing well, we keep doing that. We keep doing what we're doing. And students who are struggling, we apply some interventions to try to create a different experience for them. So it, to me, it would be the same. You know, we would use our own educational buzzwords, but looking at it through a program evaluation. And there are, there are a lot of research institutes that do this work. Major universities out of their education department or or psychology department do this work. So it would not be difficult to do. We we certainly would need the time next year or or, you know, perhaps over the summer in a retreat to identify what we want to measure so we know if we got it right and then build that system to keep coming back to it to gauge our improvement over time or what tweaks in the model we need to make over time.
Thank you. So it sounds like we we've got a good baseline to work with on measures that we can think about, but we would define it more specifically in the next board retreat.
We we could. And and I think we, you know, if we decide to move forward, we've heard from families who have raised the caution flag, right? We've heard from families who are who are worried about having kids in two elementary schools. How do we support them? We have families who are worried about multiple transitions or not being with their older, younger siblings. So we've we've heard in the last number of months, potential data sets that as a as a group, all the smiling faces on this screen, we can work with an outside agency to see how we best collect that data so we can understand if we're doing well or not and what adjustments need to be made and a level of response and transparency. A a level of response and transparency to say, we heard you, you you may not support this or be on board, but let's. Let's collect some data around, I'll use an example, the student experience or transition in the sixth grade. To see if we improve or what we need to do to the model to improve. Some program evaluations are not every year, maybe they're every other year. I've I've seen them done differently. I I was a part of a program evaluation when I was a sophomore in high school. Our high school was one of the first in New York State to move to a block schedule. I was part of the Guinea pig group because in ninth grade we had the traditional schedule and then starting in tenth grade, the block schedule. And I was a part of focus groups and other conversations and they they tracked our attendance or discipline or student success over time. And gave that school district feedback to say, you know, this is working for you and, you know, eventually that went away because they had. A lot of data over a five or seven-year period that said they were on the right trajectory. So similar, you know, similar opportunity we would have. We would have as well.
Great, thank you.
Did you want to say something about transportation? You said you were going to circle back to that?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we received a lot of comments from families around transportation and. And I I tried to explain as best as I can that every year. One-third of the students who need elementary transportation rollover. Meaning fifth graders come off the elementary transportation model and kindergarteners come on. So two of our six grades. Two of our six elementary school grades are are new, new to the system. That's why every year bus routes change. That's why bus numbers change, the pickup and drop-off time may change because we have. One-third new variables into the system. So even in our most normal circumstances, and I know this really frustrates parents. But to get it right, our transportation team uses all summer to tweak that model. And we notify parents of the bus schedule in late August or early September because. We want to try to get it as right and as accurate as possible and have bus rides as as short as possible. So it was very difficult while we're managing. School in session and our transportation model this year is very different. We have elementary kids coming every day, then we have two groups of middle schoolers, two groups of high schoolers, sometimes middle schoolers and high schoolers come every day. And so we weren't able to be super accurate. You know, we were able to use. The current average bus ride that if you live out by Hemlock Hill Farm in the corner of Furnace Woods. Those students are on a bus no more than forty minutes to the high school, which neighbors Frank G and is close to BV. We asked Liz and the transportation team to run some mock schedules during break. And they were able to, they were able to run the extremes, right? They were able to run. If I live by Hemlock Hill Farm or if I live in in the Furnace Woods area and I'm going to BV. What would my typical bus run look like? And if I lived on the far west side of our district in BV and I'm coming over to Furnace Woods, what would that bus ride look look like? So last week provided some uninterrupted time for Liz to work on that. The longest bus rides in the elementary model. Now, a caveat is using today's kids because we can't forecast kindergarteners and we can't take off, you know, current fifth grader. So if we, and I'm not proposing this, but if we implemented the Princeton Plan tomorrow, just to use today's. Students, the longest bus ride in our school district would be thirty-five minutes. Now, with more time and more runway out in front of us, you know, if we do choose to do this and do it in twenty-two. She's confident she'll have more time to to sort of get that number down. And there are a couple factors, right? Fifth graders coming off the, going from elementary to a middle school run. And number of kindergarteners coming in and kindergarteners always surprises. Sometimes, you know, we have as many as a hundred and eighty kindergarteners and as few as a hundred and twenty. So, you know, that's that's a pretty significant variable, but we felt that. We we needed sort of a timeout in our frantic school year to be able to focus on that project. Liz was able. And and her folks were able to do that over over the break. So right now, if if the board said, look, let's do this tomorrow and test the water. Not literally, but figuratively, the longest bus rides would be thirty-five minutes and and as I said. With some advanced notice, if we choose to do this in twenty-two, those bus rides could certainly go down. Now, those are the extremes. It's not the average. Those are those are the longest ones. You know, some some bus rides, some bus rides are still going to be a minute. Because we pick up the child who lives across the street from Frank G because we don't have a walking policy because of the topography of the three elementary schools. So on the long end, we're looking at thirty-five minutes and depending on the location of where our next two. Our next two cohorts of of kindergarten students live, you know, that could change a little bit, but. She believes she'd be able to to get it shorter than thirty-five. And that's with existing staff, existing buses. Everything we have today. So thanks for reminding me.
Thank you, Joe.
Would Joe, would there be an eventual option to increase bus routes? Just to shorten those times?
Yeah, so for example. You know, we we use the large buses, the little buses and the vans and all of those staff are ours. And so we certainly could could use all of the vehicles and all of our staff that are are in the budget going back a couple hours ago. You know, they're they're in the formula of of our annual budget. So absolutely. And that's why. You know, computers are great and technology is wonderful, but but the the routing software takes us maybe ninety-five percent of the way, right? And then Liz and her team will go through the rosters and say, okay, a big bus cannot get up Red Oak Lane. A big bus cannot go down, you know, certain streets near BV or Frank G or cul-de-sacs or whatever. So she always. Will revise those bus runs so that the vehicle transporting those students, you know, has access to get those kids home. So there's there is always that. You know, you may see it at dismissal or dropping kids off. You see a big bus, a little bus in a van. Those are decisions she makes just based on where students live. The the neighborhood they're in, whether or not you can turn around or not. And, you know, she makes those. Manual adjustments and then, you know, finalizes the transportation plan and then sends it out to parents.
Thank you.
Can I go and echo?
Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, I am going to suggest we table this. And the reason that I am suggesting we table this is we just passed a budget. That does not have the Princeton Plan for the next school year. The main reason why I'm tabling this is because there has not been a piece of information, paper, put in everybody's mailbox. I'm a big communication person. I believe in total transparency. So while Carol went through all of the different things that we have done, I stopped short in. November of twenty. That was the first meeting of the SWAT team. In twelve twenty, we just compared budgets. They didn't, they went from March twenty to eleven twenty doing nothing, right? Because we were busy doing other things with COVID. Getting our kids, getting all that kind of stuff together. So all they did was compare. It's only been a few months. We just stuffed eight meetings into about three weeks. And we've only had one board meeting where we were able to discuss this. When you look at the first paragraph of the policy, the first paragraph actually addresses redistricting. We've done it once. We've done it once about maybe thirty years ago. The reason I say that is because even I was at the BV meeting PTA and you know what? Their school is fantastic. Their teachers are fantastic. And I don't want to, I want to know why they even want to go anywhere else because they're so fantastic. I'm gonna tell you that right now. They have great teachers, they have passionate teachers, they have passionate parents and. That's that's a different situation. However, when we decided to redistrict, I don't know why. I I've been asking for that. We didn't even bother to get the numbers. Right now, and one parent brought it up last night and I agree with her, and I don't think she heard me at the beginning of the meeting. We have kids going all over the place right now. So we have kids going from Croton to Frank G with with all that redistricting. For our class sizes, why didn't we look at those numbers? Why didn't we take an aerial view? It's kind of hard because BV and Frank G are kind of next to each other. But take the aerial view and split the district in three and see what the numbers were at least at least were. We didn't bother to do that. The second thing is, instead of disrupting, dismantling and throwing our community into an upheaval, because it is. You look at social media right now. You look at parents talking to each other right now. You look at a protest this evening. We have families pitted against each other for what I don't think we we really need to be doing. There are actions we can take. We say that we are going to go through the all these processes and hire these things to make sure the program. Why weren't we doing that already? We we had one school that was target, um, tagged. There were things that we could have done immediately to help them and we didn't do that. We were kind of told that we were getting the support, that they were getting the support they needed, and I don't really know if they were. So there are things we can do. Why aren't we looking into universal pre-K? That exists. So one of the things that was brought up last night was that, you know what, other, when you have different parents who can afford it, they go to pre-K, that's available to us. I don't know why we're not taking advantage of universal pre-K. Why weren't we giving them the resources that they needed? Quite frankly, the the E N L population that was there was in Furnace Woods. There are twenty-three kids there. They can easily be. I don't want to say they can easily because you don't, I'm not for moving kids all over the place. So there are things that we actually could have done. Another parent brought up that her child, one of her children, for different needs, had to go to a different school. That's going to happen. Every two years, you're going to be going to school, different schools. So emotionally for me, I like the K through five. I like the consistency of this, and I told them that. I like the consistency of children having the same principal, the same teachers, the same social workers, that same networking. I think it's extremely important. My biggest thing was communication. We did not communicate to people without children in our schools. I am asking to table this, not not have it, because I know some parents are for it, some parents are not. Our community members do not know about this. They don't, unless you are in the school. Unless you have children in the school and unless you bother to look at our website. If I have neighbors who don't have children in their school, there's absolutely no reason that they're going to look at our website. So my biggest thing is communication and I'm very big into transparency and letting people know. So whether or not they come forward and voice their opinion, I think we should wait until we have actually put a letter in people's mailboxes. To at least give them the opportunity to know what's going on in this district with this absolutely huge decision that we're about to undertake. So I I I hear the pros and cons of this. I really, really do. My big B concern is that people don't know about it. Only if you're in this district, only if you're in a PTA, only if you're involved, which leads me to another thing. I I feel for those parents. When you have involved families, you're going to make it. Much more difficult to get involved and that might, you know, that might lag off. And when you have parents that aren't involved to begin with, moving your children to across the district is going to really not make them involved. But again, I am asking us to table this until we at least put a piece of mail into every resident in our school district. I think that's only fair, to tell you the truth. The heat just went off in my house and my voice is cracking because I'm freezing to tell you the truth. For some reason, I'm looking around, but I think this is really serious and too big of an issue. To throw our community into an upheaval when we when we are not doing it next year and we actually have the time. To put a piece of paper in everybody's mailbox. Because you want to know what? People didn't get the soundings. People didn't get the lanyard, especially. People that I know for other reasons going around this district. So I really think it's imperative to make sure everybody knows. And you want to know what? After that, if most of the community wants it, you go for it. If they don't, you don't go for it. It's just too big. It's not a lot of hiring. I'll I'll say math because I'm a math teacher. I don't want to target any other teacher. It's not like hiring a math teacher. It it is changing the entire district. People need to know about it. So that's my, I I really believe that we need to tell people about it before we make this decision.
Motion to table the.
The vote on this policy, yes. Just to wait.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, open for discussion.
I would like to actually, I I agree with what Lori said for the same reasons and also for different ones. Just to reiterate, we did finally, the the, there were discussions back in twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. When we found out about the, you know, the closure of Indian Point and we started looking at all different options. But there was, we never finalized or honed in on the the Princeton Plan. The Princeton Plan finally gained legs somewhere around with the SWAT analysis, which basically. Did not even, they didn't even meet until November, but that was their first meeting because of COVID, because of everything else. We just got the SWAT analysis. We, the board, just got the SWAT analysis four weeks ago. We got it on December, on March tenth. We got, that was the day that that John McCarthy actually presented it to us. We got it that day. So and the board and the, I'm sorry, the stakeholders did not make any recommendations. It was just a listing of this is, you know, this, you know, basically, you know, the opportunities and threats. Because the strengths and weaknesses were district-wide. It the the opportunities and threats for the Princeton Plan focus. So it's really been a very short amount of time. That being said, and this sort of piggybacks on what Corey asked for, was the 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 metrics to know like how this is going to work out. And and how to measure it. Right now, there's a lot of unknowns. We've not seen like a single bit of information on the value of the Princeton Plan. And whether it's a better education system for our kids. We do know that it will equalize the class sizes. But it will increase them overall. Every single class, there's no way, just based on the math. Every class will not, will be no more. No less rather than two or three minus caps and can actually be more than one plus cap. So these are going to be bigger classes. So that makes things a lot, it it'll be equal, but it's going to be bigger class sizes. That's just the thing. There's also the, my concern with the, with the getting away from the neighborhood schools is. I like, you know, like Lori, I like the idea of the teachers and staff and principals. And and knowing my child and having that person there and and knowing for six years and and having a sense of. You know, where he's been and where he's going and and if something is different, having that knowledge and having that security. That's that's a tremendous asset for the teachers, the principals and the children and the families. So that's just, you know, those are two small pieces, but I've not seen anything, any data or any. Any sort of information about whether the the Princeton Plan actually provides better out, you know, it results in better outcomes. And frankly, at the end of the day, that's our goal is to provide, to have these children at the best outcomes, whether it's testing, whether it's graduation rate. Whatever metric you want to use, it's to see what that num, you know, where that comes in. There's also uncertainty about the financial benefit. I know that, you know, you can certainly, you know, quantify the fourteen teachers. It's a hundred and ten, you know, per teacher, that's a million and a half, that's the fourteen teachers lost. I'd like to point out that those teachers we're losing are going to be like our new, our promising young ones, the ones who are going to be our future. The ones that we are looking to build the district on. They're the ones who are going to be leaving. The other concern is there's also, and I know that there's going to be greater transportation costs. It's not going to be a wash. It's not. There's, you're going to be running either, you know, more frequently and that's going to be more maintenance, more preventative, more corrective repairs. Supplies and even more bus drivers because you're going to be running these buses more often. You're going to be, it's going to be back and forth throughout the district. You know, for, I don't know, what, two, three hours every, you know, at a time, twice a day. The cost to retrofit the schools hasn't been quantified. I mean, we're going to have to like change around things like redo bathrooms, classrooms, the physical ed. Playground, technology, all of these things are going to have to, the libraries, they're all going to have to be shifted around. There's also the cost of the teachers breaking down, setting up classrooms, moving across there. These, you know, the 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 cost of that, that's not been quantified. So all of those costs are going to reduce the actual savings that you're talking about. Is to take, at least in the first year, but certainly there's always going to be costs as we're moving things around. The effect on the family is another thing that it's, again, there's, you know, the splitting siblings, different, you know, the, the different bus routes. I mean, honestly, you know, we're talking about how much money we're saving, you know, that we're going to save people money on on these districts. On, you know, your taxes, we're going to reduce it by this much. I did the math and just for an example. Somebody who was in Montrose is going to save approximately four fifty to, the average house, four fifty to five hundred dollars a year. Somebody in Cortland Manor, it's about nine hundred dollars a year. They're going to spend that same nine hundred dollars a year. They're gonna spend that same nine hundred dollars a year going back and forth. They will spend that money going and picking up their child and, and additional childcare and the other, the other costs that are associated in, in terms of it. So I don't know that that savings, whether we pay it to additional childcare, whether we put it in our gas tank, whether it's the value of our time, that money will get spent. So I do have concerns about that, and I don't feel that those numbers have been looked at. Um, the loss of community involvement, this will decimate the P T As because the way that they're structured, I mean, I know is that, I was in the P T As for a long time and I was, my sons went to Frank G. Lindsay and I was there all the time. If I had to figure out how to justify, how to manage between my time at Frank G. Lindsay and B V or Furnace Woods or two different schools, or even three, I would never make that same commitment. So I do have some serious concerns about that. Um, my biggest thing, and this goes towards what Lori says about putting the, you know, lack of community, um, you know, people not being aware. They haven't, the people who have, are aware or aren't aware, they, they have the right to have input here. They need to be able to, we have not asked them and said, you know, this is what it's gonna cost you. Here's the tax calculator. Run your numbers. Tell me if that's, if this makes sense to you. And if they say, you know what, I'll take my chances on, you know, I, you know, the, the educational value, I will take, you know, the, the cost. I will, you know, either be willing to pay that extra tax, you know, those extra taxes or not, or I simply can't, or I won't. Give them the choice. And to this date, we really haven't. We've gotten a lot of emails from people, but giving an email and having Carmen read their emails, like in the board meetings, is not the same thing as having them, you know, come face to face with us, whether, and, and now that the COVID situation is, it, it seems to be mitigating with the, you know, with the, you know, the, as we're getting close to herd immunity, whether it's the vaccinations, whether it's people who've had it. I think it's time for, I, I think maybe we can ha, start having some meetings where we can actually see people, hear them, even if it's an outside thing. But I think it's necessary to hear and, and let, and talk to these people and find out what they're, um, what they're, what they're willing to do, what they're willing to pay, if they're willing to pay, or whether they're, they'd rather, you know, have the, um, have the, um, Princeton Plan implemented. But I don't feel that we've, I don't feel that these people are, are feeling heard, and I don't think that we've, we've given them the opportunity by not reaching out to the people who, you know, don't have kids in the district, um, who don't, um, you know, either the kids aren't there yet, or they've aged out, or were senior citizens. They haven't heard about this. So I think it's important that they hear about it and that they, they weigh in on what they think, you know, what they're willing to, to support. Um, but again, my, my greatest reservation is, you know, is, is the unknown, the unanswered questions, whether it's the educational value, whether it's the financial benefits, uh, the effects on family, there's just so many unanswered questions that I think to make a decision about moving forward with this, I think is, you know, I, I think it's unconscionable. I, I, and I'll be honest with you, until we face, I think there's a lot to be said for, for talking to people face to face, and we can do this in the next month, the next couple of months, and, and hearing what they have to say and hearing what their feelings truly are. Um, and, and instead of relying on like the, you know, an email or God forbid, social media. So I do think it's important that we hear from people that way. And, um, so I do, I am firmly in support of tabling this and making the decision, um, you know, since we don't need to make the decision financially right now, you know, we've, um, I know that the, there was a huge discussion about doing this in twenty twenty-one. If there was the feeling that this could be, you know, this could be implemented in five months, then we can wait a couple of months. You know, if it's not impacting the bud, if the budget's not an issue, and there's the, um, comfort level that this can be implemented in, in such a short period of time, which I don't necessarily agree with, but I do think it gives us, um, I think it's important to hear from the community and um, I think by tabling this, this vote, I think that allows the community to come out and to, to be heard and to, whether it's we do a survey, whether we tell them to, um, you know, just to, you know, put something in their mailboxes and, and have them get in touch with us. But I think it's important that we hear from everybody, and I think to date, we have not.
Does anybody want to respond to these comments? Allie?
Um, more, more questions than a response. Um, so Joe or Carol, can either one of you address what we have done to reach out to the community, whether it's meetings that Joe has attended, um, mailings that we have talked about this? Um, and then the second one is, can, um, one of you or maybe a trustee that's been around longer, talk about why the stakeholder model, stakeholder committee model was chosen over just a thumbs up, thumbs down, community survey, and what was some of the rationale behind that thought process?
Joe, you wanna start?
Yes, uh, in terms of communication, we do, um, send home print, uh, information. Um, if you voted last year in our, in our budget, which was absentee ballot, you should have received, um, a copy of the lanyard because the same post office sends them to the same addresses. So if you voted, you should have received soundings. Um, soundings each of the last couple of years talks about the cost analysis and the need to address, the need to address, uh, uh, reorganization, or at least to cost it out, uh, to determine what the best method, uh, is to go. Um, traditionally, I meet with various, uh, various groups, the, um, senior citizens in, in Buchanan and Verplank, they're two different groups. Uh, I'm a part of Rotary in the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, yes, we have put a lot of information on our website and social media. We actually did a, uh, communication that this was, uh, a couple of years ago about how people want to receive their information. They do not want mailings. They want things publicly shared and publicly posted so that there's an archive that they can reference it so they can share it electronically. So, uh, this district made a significant shift from tens of thousands of dollars in mailing information to people, um, to trying to drive traffic to our website and social media and all of those outlets. We have a website dedicated to this whole cost analysis process and timeline and research, um, about it. Um, every meeting I've been a part of, or I've, you know, attended P T A meetings and probably talked about this at least twice a year. Um, it's been prominent on our website. You know, we made, we organizationally made a cognizant decision, um, to be more digital that also included, uh, before my time of board meetings, board meeting materials used to be printed and mailed home, or someone would drop everything off and things became digital. Um, that's how districts communicate. Um, in terms of, of a survey, uh, I would say if you're going to do a statistically significant survey, you're probably looking at more than two months of time and, and probably in the tens of tw- ten, twenty thousand dollars to pull it off. Um, you'll have to have an outside party do the survey, make sure it's pass detected, so on and so forth. Uh, but I, I'm not gonna get into that because NISBA, uh, the New York State School Boards Association weighed in uh, on whether or not boards should, uh, outsource, for lack of a better term, decisions like this, um, to just using surveys to drive policy. Uh, so those have been just, and, and I know Carol has more. I don't, I don't have the, you know, the, the year by year, but I also know that this got the community's attention because shortly after Indian Point announced their closure, uh, and we commissioned the cost analysis, we had surveys or surveys, we had petitions in our school district um, to oppose doing anything even before the cost analysis was even vetted by the board. Um, those were conversations that I had throughout the, uh, the winter of, of, uh, twenty nineteen and the winter of twenty twenty, and those presentations are also online. You know, there, there are probably scores of other things that we've, we've done and talked about. Uh, emails to parents almost every Friday talks about this, uh, this topic.
It did, a lot.
Communications that we've sent home, uh, as I mentioned, in terms of newsletter, soundings, budget, you name it, it's there. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm sort of fumbling around here because I don't have, you know, the, the breadth and depth of everything. I know Carol already um, talked about most of that. Uh, here's, well, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I'm, just to clarify, just, and I just like, I mean, you talk about the soundings and the lanyard. I think a lot of people, once they leave the district, I have, there's, I'm, you talked about it being tied to voting rules. I, you know, I have five voters in, that are, you know, at one point registered in this house. We never got a single soundings or a single lanyard that discussed this. So I'm have, I have to assume that if I didn't get it, nobody else did. I mean, that it's, I, it just, maybe mine got, you know, maybe the five that should have come to my house, you know, any one of the names that should have triggered it, you know, somehow did not, but I'm guessing other people did not get it also. Um, in terms of the P T A, and you talked about going visiting seniors in the Rotary and stuff, yeah, even not in the past year, these things aren't really happening, you know, I mean, you're having the P T As, but it's, it's, you know, they're, they're Zoom and we're not having, senior citizens aren't meeting. I don't know about the Rotary. I don't imagine they're having a lot of meetings, you know, until this, you know, this, you know, COVID situation gets resolved. But a lot of this isn't happening, and if that's the way that you normally communicate, it's, it won't happen because these, these events aren't occurring, and people aren't gonna automatically go to a website and go look and say, let's go look at the Henhog website, particularly people who aren't there yet or, or who are, you know, whose kids have aged out. And especially, again, people are so distracted now. The people are, you know, people have so much, they don't know if they're sending their kids to school. They have, they have financial issues. They may have health issues. They, you know, they're day to day, they're figuring out whether they're working from home or whether they can go in, or whether their kids are gonna be home and when they, you know, when they can get on their Zoom calls and, and handle their, you know, their, their work. There's a lot of stuff that's up in the air, so I think for people to go and say, you know, to randomly, let's go see what's happening in the school district and, you know, I don't think that's going to happen unless they have a child in the district. So I think that precludes a lot of people, the younger and the older, I, you know, the, the seniors, the people who've got their kids, who've kids have like left the district and people who don't have their children yet, aren't making this, making this a priority right now to go check what's going on in the school district because they just have so much else going on right now. That's why I think, you know, and I'm not quite sure why a survey would cost, you know, twenty, thirty thousand, not that you spoke of because it's something, I mean, it can be, it doesn't have to be so very formal. It can be something that's on, the same way you've done the, um, the, the, the COVID, the, um, you know, this, the, the attendance issues for the kids, you know, COVID, do you want to go hybrid? You want, you know, what would you be interested in? Do you want to go hybrid? Do you want to go fully remote? Do you want, you know, fully, you know, in, in person? I think the same way we do that, we could do, you know, if we do the, notify people that this is there, it, it, that, that, that this, this, um, this, the survey is online, and you can tell them at the same time to check the, the tax calculator and see how this is gonna impact your, your situation. I think that's, that, that's the communication that's missing, is people, again, people who are in the, in the district might be hearing about it, and I don't know if the teachers are sending this out on their weekly reminders that, by the way, the Princeton Plan's being discussed, tune into your board meeting. I don't think that's part of the weekly newsletters. Maybe it is, but I highly doubt that. Um, so I do think that there's a lot of people who just are so involved in all the other upheaval in their life that they, maybe they're not getting that this is going on in their school district and that they're gonna be asked to, you know, that this is, that there's such a monumental shift at foot.
Can I speak to why we decided on the SWOT rather than doing a community vote or a community survey? The SWOT analysis allowed us to gather information from a wide variety of stakeholders and informed, um, informed information. It allowed them to ask questions and bring to us the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, or threats, and which ones floated to the top so that we could see if there were overwhelming obstacles to this being presented or overwhelming positives, et cetera. And the, the reason really that we don't do a vote or a community survey is that this is our job. This is what we've been elected to do as board trustees. New York Education Law seventeen oh nine says, "The powers and duties of boards of education is to prescribe the course of study by which the pupils of the school shall be graded and classified and to regulate the admission of pupils and their transfer from one class or department to another, as their scholarship shall warrant, to have in all respects the superintendent's management and control of the educational affairs of the district, and therefore shall have all the powers reasonably necessary to exercise powers granted expressly or by implication and to discharge the duties imposed expressly or by implication by this chapter or other statutes." And additionally, it is stated in state statute, Mary Pat, you had a chance to speak.
I'm listening.
Although an advisory vote is not legally binding on a school board, it can easily lead to the inference that the board is seeking to avoid its responsibility to make decisions within its legal powers and is therefore an undesirable practice and should be discouraged. The board trustees were voted in by the community to make an informed decision, and sometimes they're very difficult decisions and they're very emotional decisions, but that's why we have seven board members looking at these issues and making these decisions.
Okay, but here's the thing, if you're sitting here and we're not asking the community what they want, we're making an uninformed decision. These are the people who voted us in. Why are we not listening to what they want or what they, how do we know? We're sitting here making a decision about, oh, we're gonna do the Princeton Plan because people won't want to pay those taxes, but we're not asking them. How do we know what they want to pay? How do we know? Or how do we know what their concerns are? Maybe they think the Princeton Plan's the greatest thing. Maybe they have reservations about the fact it's, it's educational value or the, you know, or what it's going to do to their family life, and they don't want it. How do we make a decision for them if we're not, if we have no idea of what, what they want? I mean, or what they're going to support?
Corey?
So, you know, I, I hear a lot of this, and I, I feel like everybody listens in a different way, Mary Pat. Um, Lori and I were at the same meeting last night, and I think we both heard two completely different things. Um, you know, Lori, summary of, of what happened last night was very different from what I heard.
What, what was different? Those parents were absolutely fantastic. Those parents are passionate, that P T A is wonderful.
Please let Corey speak, maybe he'll.
I know, but he's, he's saying that.
No, Lori, you gotta let me finish what I'm saying. So Lori, I'm not saying that any of them were not passionate. They were extremely passionate. But I heard a lot of different views, you know, and I don't want to pit P T As or schools against each other. So I don't want to, to say which way, you know, we were hearing information from people last night, but I think people were um, a little hurt by some of the statements you made about, you know, the board potentially failing a school, where I think all the parents love their school and they love the education their kids are getting, and the numbers don't always tell the truth. Um, and I think that there were parents that were supportive of the Princeton Plan and, and parents that also had more questions, and they had a lot of questions. Uh, and there were parents that also were against the Princeton Plan, and I think, you know, we listened to all of them. So how we all listen is, is very different, and it's up to us as a board to figure out how we reach out to the community. I've reached out to a number of parents across all three elementary schools to get their opinions. Um, and I try to do it one-on-one as much as possible so that there's no crowd mentality of, you know, things that you see on social media sometimes where people are scared to speak up. So, you know, all I'm saying is, we all have different ways of listening and we interpret things different ways, and we were all elected to make a decision here, which is not an easy decision. There, no matter what decision we make, there will be people that will be very unhappy with us. There will be people that say, you voted against the Princeton Plan, therefore you voted to raise my taxes. There were people that will say, you voted for the Princeton Plan, therefore you voted against my kids. Um, you know, everyone's got a different opinion, but we have a lot of information as a board. And, and I, I would like to think that we have more information on the Princeton Plan than anyone else in the district, which is why we're here to make that decision. And we all are going to go out and listen to people in a different way. But, you know, I, I just have to, to say, you know, we all hear things in different ways and sometimes in our own context, and we have to try to be as objective as possible uh, and give everyone time and listen as best as we can personally.
I, I am going to respond, that just because I disagree with somebody doesn't, that, uh, last night, last night, when Cory, Cory, I, I, I thought I heard them, they are ve- very much in favor of the Princeton plan. Very much in favor. I think the majority was, right? I am not saying that. First of all, not one of us attended, is it true that not one of us attended a Frank G? Did anybody go to a Frank G PTA?
I did. I went to the forum they held.
You went to the forum then?
I was president of the forum that they held.
Okay, because some of the parents said that there wasn't a board member at the P, a board member there. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that, at least. My only thing is that, I, I, Mary Pat, I'm sorry to say this. I know Mary Pat went on. My thing was, we need to put a piece of mail in everybody's mailbox. Cory, you just said that you spoke to people in schools. I'm speaking to people who don't have kids in schools and they're saying, we don't know anything about this. So, so that's it. I just, I just want to make sure that we give those people the opportunity to learn about it and perhaps contact us before we make this decision that doesn't have to be made right now. Having said that, since the Princeton plan is not going to go through in September, we need to address things that a particular elementary school needs. They, they need stuff from us and we need to address that. So if we look at pre- so I'm going to go back because I, I'm going.
Can we keep, yeah, can we keep?
I'm going on a tangent, right? All that I said was, can we please table this until we've actually put a piece of mail that only deals with the Princeton plan in everybody's mailbox? That's it. That's, that's all I said. So I don't know what the harm is in putting it off a month so that we've done our due diligence and making sure that we've reached every resident and not stuffing it in a newspaper or a land or something. Because quite frankly, some, some, if somebody got it in their mailbox and they see it had to do with the high school and they don't have kids, they may not have looked at it. Is, is it our, is that our fault? No. But if we give something that specifically addresses the Princeton plan and what it means and what it affects and all that kind of stuff, then I'm satisfied. I just want to make sure that we've reached every resident. And quite frankly, we have not. We've reached a lot of school people, absolutely. But we haven't reached other people who don't have children in the district. That's it. That's it.
Does anybody else want to comment on whether we should table the vote to a, to a future date?
What, what would be the harm in, in doing it? Because we, so if we vote on the policy tonight, it's the draft anyway. So, right? Don't you have to present the draft and then the next two weeks you vote on the policy? We can vote on it tonight.
Yeah, this would be the final.
Okay, so if we were to send out this letter, what, what are the benefits that we would get from that letter? Like, how would we, how would we know if that letter was successful? You know, just like we asked Joe about metrics before, what would we expect to get out of that? Because there's going to be a certain cost associated with that. Um, and are we going to get the benefit from that cost? And then what would the risk be to doing this if we waited till the next meeting, let's say? So let's say we were able to get out a letter within the next week and then by the next meeting in, in two weeks, we vote on this. What would be the risk of doing that?
Joe, how long would it be, take to get a letter out to the whole entire community?
Uh, well, we've got to create the document. Um, we have fourteen thousand registered voters. Carmen and I would have to talk to the mail people and the folks that we use, uh, for the budget, uh, or for the, um, uh, for the ballots that we used last year and we, you know, playing backwards from that. I know that when we sent the ballots out last year, uh, it, we gave ourselves about a two-week window. They've got a, their bulk mail, they, they go from, um, our district office down the Westchester, they get sorted, so on and so forth, stamped, and then they come right back up. You know, that was a concern last year with, uh, with the ballots in the mail was the time.
Could this mailing suggest that they go to, like, and, you know, suggest they go to the website and their, and a survey and so that they can put their information in? Saying, you know, whether they, they support it, whether they're against it, whether they know enough about it, whether they would like to hear more, what their questions might be. Um, and if, something that would go towards, you know, just directing them to the website and by that would be the result. You would know who got it or at least an idea of whether people were getting it and whether, how they're responding. We would have that, you know, some, some, it doesn't have to be a lot of questions, a half a dozen questions. You know, directing them to the tax calculator so that they could see, by the way, this is what, this is how it's going to affect you. This is how it works. This is how, you know, just go to the tax calculator, it walks you through just so that they're aware and they can make, you know, an informed decision. And then we could use the results of that survey and to, you know, to sort of give us an idea of whether we're moving in the right direction or not. Or whether it's, you know, that, that's, I think by directing them to something, taking that, that mailing and directing them to the survey, that way if they see this and say, oh, let me go on and do the survey or let me respond to it or let me throw it out. They may not, but I think that, I don't think having that additional information and that input from the community would hurt. And, and frankly, in, you know, in a month from now or something, maybe we could even have, like, depending on how long this is pushed back, we could get a little bit more community input. Maybe, maybe have a meeting at some point before the end of the year. I mean, I, I just think that there's value in that.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I think we need to be purposeful about what we want to do if we do the letter like this. Right? The argument earlier was that we were trying to reach out to people who don't have internet access, who don't get on social media, who don't have access to that information. If we send them out a letter that says, go on to social media, go on to the website, go on to the internet to get your information, it's not accomplishing the purpose that the previous argument about the letter made. So the question is, is again, what are we trying to get out of this letter if we were to do this? Because right now, based on this, it doesn't sound like we're accomplishing much. All the people that we're going to reach are already on the internet and social media.
I think we have, wait, excuse me, just one minute. I think we have two motions here in front of us. One motion was just to table the vote to another meeting and now we're adding things to the motion. So we would have to amend the motion if we wanted to do that. It's parliamentary procedure, Lori, you're shaking your head. Um, so your motion was to table the vote to a different meeting. And now we're adding on sending letters and surveys out. So this.
No, no, that, that was me. I wanted to table it until we actually sent a piece of mail home. That, that's my suggestion. I'm not saying we never vote because we have to vote. Like, there, people want this, people don't want this. Of course we need to vote on this. We need, we need to do something. But right at this time, my motion is to table it until we've done our due diligence, making sure that we've sent a letter home explaining Princeton plan and its implications, giving some information. If they want to respond, that's up to them. I just want to make sure that we've reached people. That's it. That's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, we have a motion on the table, a motion before the board to table the vote to a future meeting so that we can send an informational mailer out to the public. Does anybody have any new comments or questions about that?
I just, I have the question, what is the risk of doing that? What is the risk of the overall schedule, plan, budget if we were to do this? And there might be a community risk too, because another two weeks of this divisive mess could just be a huge challenge for the community itself.
It's, I don't think it's going to go away in two weeks if we, just if we vote tonight. So, and I don't think the financial risk and the timing risk isn't there because we have, there, if, however it goes, there is time to make the, the budget won't be discussed, you know, decided until later on after this happens. And the, uh, moving forward with any, so there's plenty of time to move forward with any, um, potential changes if, if, if we opt to go with the Princeton plan. There's, we have the time. It's, it's a question of getting the information and hopefully getting feedback from people.
But I still, I still haven't heard, what's the measure of success? Like, what, why are we doing this? And how are we going to know if we did it right?
As long as we did it. Uh, that's my thing is that I, you know, if people respond, they respond. But at least we have done our due diligence. That's it.
So, but so we're going to spend money on, on a CYA? I mean, that doesn't sound right.
No, what I would suggest.
What is the benefit?
I think Bill would like to make a comment.
I don't think, um, you know, that the decisive indecisiveness of the community is going to go away if we make a decision today. But I think, like has been said earlier this evening, you know, many times that no matter which way this board votes, we are going to make a portion of the community unhappy and a portion is going to be happy with the decision. With that said, although the decide, you know, the disruption to the community is not going to go away immediately, it's going to go away after a certain period after a decision is made. So hypothetically, if it's one week, one month, three months for the community to heal and move forward as a group, one group, the sooner we make a decision, the sooner that one week, month, one month, three-month period ends. So we are causing unnecessary pain to the community, continuing it by not making a decision that we should be making. And we've been spending the last four years learning about and educating ourselves about as a board. I think we know enough information at this time. We've heard from a lot of different, uh, entities on this. Um, our own administrators, the groups tasked with looking into this. We've all heard from community members, whether they're got kids in the district or not. Um, I see no need to kick the can down the road to cause further pain and arguments between our community.
Thank you, Bill. Lori, can I just say, you know, there, there have been articles in the past in Lowhood and the Examiner News that has mentioned the Princeton, have talked about the Princeton plan. And just today, there was an article in Lowhood, there was an article in the Examiner Gazette. And I believe from the hour, um, earlier comments that there was a protest and I heard News twelve was there as well. So does that satisfy your information to the public request?
Unfortunately, it does not. It does not. Everybody doesn't get the Examiner unless you pick it up in a store, I believe. I, I just don't understand what the problem is, why we're so reluctant to put a piece of mail in somebody's mailbox. I, I don't. I, I just don't. So whether I, whether I support this or not support this has nothing to do with it. I just don't think, think we're being a little bit negligent if we don't do that. That's all. And I don't think, I don't think we're going to still at all, to tell you the truth, because if it does get implemented in twenty twenty-two, I mean, it's, it's like, people's feelings are not going away when they have to put their three kids on three different buses. I mean, that's, just think we really need to reach people. That's all.
Um, Joe, did you have a comment? Or should I go to Bill?
Yeah, I'm just back to, um, not the purpose, but, but what would we be sending home? Because with fourteen thousand people, if we want to do a credible survey to see the temperature of the community, that is a much different process than putting up a survey on the website and trying to get fourteen thousand people to weigh in that we will not control. We won't be able to control if people from outside our school district take it, if a URL, you know, so on and so forth. Those are conversations that we had when we, uh, were discussing surveys in the past about a bond. And, um, we did a survey with a postcard. A week later, I believe a, a hard copy survey that they returned because as some of us have, have discussed, not everyone is either tech savvy or, you know, uses the computer to, to get that information, um, to, to, to be informed. So now, uh, you know, are we sending a newsletter home, a multi-page spread of the Princeton plan? Um, I just think if, if we're going to do a survey, it's got to be statistically significant if, if this group's going to make any decisions on it.
I don't think you're talking about a survey.
No, Lori's proposing just an informational flyer, I think.
Right. I mean, if they want to, want to put something on it and they could either go on the computer or I'll mail it back. I mean, if we want to get information, and I know nobody wants to hear this, but, and I know we're not legally obliged to do this, but why couldn't it be on our ballot? Why couldn't, why can't the community vote on it?
I think we already discussed that. Okay. Bill, did you want to make another comment?
Yeah, I do not agree that we would get, um, the desired results from a mailing. Um, Lori, you're making a face.
Because I don't know what desired result means. What do you mean by a desired result?
Well, the desired result hasn't been well-defined, but you're.
My desired result is just to let people know.
All these other meetings that we've had, information disseminated through, all these methods don't work. I'm not sure what makes you think if you mail something from Hendrick Hudson School District to somebody who doesn't have kids in the district, they're going to say that's the school and toss it out. I don't see if you're, you know, that, I see this as just a way to kick the can down the road and not make a decision. I think we should make a decision and move on.
All right. If we don't have any more further discussion on this, we've kind of gone around and around it. And I think, feel like we're getting the same answers over and over again. So the first vote will be on whether we should table the, um, table the vote on the policy to a later meeting so that we can send out a mailer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I just, I appreciate, I'm sorry, just would have liked.
Can I just finish the vote? All opposed?
Yeah, because it's going to say no, so.
Mary Pat, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, my, my reservation is, I just, again, if we're making a vote right now, I, and again, I feel like the people are not feeling like they're heard. They're not feeling, the community does not feel like they are being considered and that they're, you know, that it's, and I don't think that we're getting the input from a wide swath of people. We're getting the people who are the, the, for lack of a better word, the more, the more vocal. We're getting the people who are, you know, um, you know, just who really feel, you know, who are either very PTA, you know, in, in the PTAs a lot or whatever. We're getting that, we're not hearing from, for lack of a better, the rank and file. And those people are not being heard.
Thank you, Mary Pat. I think you've made that very clear.
I have, but it, nobody seems to be listening and I don't understand how, how, nobody cares that we're not considering everybody, you know, that, that, that nobody cares that, that people aren't feeling heard. I don't understand how that's, how, how that's being disregarded. And that we're sitting here in our living rooms making decisions for people without facing them. That, that.
Mary Pat, I take, I take great offense to you saying that we're making a decision without thinking about how people care. I take great offense to that. And I think that our job as board members is to absolutely do that. And if we're not doing that, then we're not doing our jobs. So for you to imply that we are not listening to the community and understanding how much pain people are going to be going through, one way or the other. There, people will be going through pain one way or the other. There is no silver bullet that will make everyone happy. We understand that.
They're begging for a forum, for the opportunity.
We have forums, Mary Pat, just because they're not in person so that everybody can have a super spreader event and catch COVID.
It's not a super spreader event, Cory. We do it outside and we do it in two months. It's not a super spreader event, Cory. I mean, look at the numbers. In two months, most of the people are going to be vaccinated. We're going to be, it's going to be significantly different, especially if we do this outside. There are ways to do this and people are feeling, we're making these decisions and people are standing outside. You know, they're protesting outside the high school because they have no other place to go. They can't go to a, a board meeting. They can't go to like the, well, maybe they could go to the district office, but they think nobody's there. So instead they stand on the side of the road in front of the high school because they have no other place. That's what they're doing because they feel like they're not being heard. And they're calling Channel twelve to pay attention to them because they feel like we're not. And I don't understand how, how you're okay with that.
I don't, I don't understand why you think we're all okay with what's going on, Mary Pat. We have a very tough decision in front of us, you know.
Cory, we don't have all the information and you're sitting here ready to make the decision.
We do have all the information. We've been talking about this for four years, Mary Pat.
We've not been, four years. We just got the SWOT analysis a month ago. We've been talking about opportunities. We've not specifically talked about the Princeton plan in, in, you know, using the SWOT analysis and using the numbers until one month ago. That's, we've not been talking about this for four years. We've been talking about our, you know, the, the possibilities, the opportunities, the, the, you know, the options. We've not been specifically talking about the Princeton plan for four years. That's not been narrowed down to the single focus.
In twenty seventeen, when we had the board retreat, that was one of the key bullet points that we had when Indian Point was closing in our board retreat. We've been talking about it since then and it's been four years and COVID. We've been talking about it since then and it's been four years and COVID has made it really tough, but Indian Point is still closing at the same time. They haven't changed their schedule, so we can't, how do we change our schedule because of that?
We still need to give our kids a good education and we've never asked the community if they'd be willing to pay the extra money rather than make the cuts that the Princeton plan is going to require. We've never asked the community that. How can you make a decision on what money we're going to spend if we're, if we haven't asked the community whose pockets we're taking it out of?
I feel like we're going around in circles here again. Bill, do you have anything fresh to say? You were unmuted, I assume you wanted to make a comment? No.
I, I don't want to add to this conversation. This is becoming very unproductive. I, I think we need to move on.
Does anybody else have any new comments to make?
Um, just one little thing, if we're going on what the majority is, is actually telling us-
We are going on our information and our best decision as board trustees.
Well, if we truly want to listen to the community, then we should be doing that. Just saying.
All right, I think it looks like our discussion has wrapped up. Um, so I'm going to call for a vote on this policy reading. And all in favor of the policy revisions as stated?
So moved.
So moved. And against?
I'm against and I have to say I'm ashamed of you people. I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed. I did be cowardly sitting here making this decision without, with all the, the information. I'm, I'm so ashamed. Such a disgrace.
Policy passes five-two and I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. Can I get a motion to close the meeting, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Have a good evening, everybody. This was a very difficult process, as you can see, and contentious even amongst the board. I hope moving forward that, um, we can move forward as a community and we do want to hear what people are worried about with this impending change. Lori doesn't believe it, but we do want to hear what you're concerned about and try to mitigate that as much as possible and, uh, we will work together to do what's best for our students. Thank you.